You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
We will call this meeting the Branford Planning and Zoning Commission Order. It is Thursday, September 5th, 2024. I have about 7:01 PM. I will introduce members of the commission and staff to begin with. Commission member Joe Chadwick. Joe, are you here?
Joe Chadwick is present.
Thank you, Joe. Fred Russo, commission member, are you here?
Fred Russo, present.
Thank you, Fred. Joe Vayuso, Joe, are you here?
Joe Vayuso, present.
Thank you, Joe. Marcy Palusi, Marcy, are you here?
Marcy's present.
Thank you, Marcy. Sharon Hutner, Sharon, are you here?
Sharon Hutner is here.
Thank you, Sharon. Our staff this evening is our town planner, Harry Smith. Harry, are you here?
I'm here.
And our assistant planner, Evan Bryning.
Here.
And our clerk recording secretary lurking in the cloud is Michelle Martin. I am Chuck Anders' chair. And at this point, I'll ask our secretary Fred Russo to read the notice of public hearing.
Legal notice, town of Branford. The Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Branford, Connecticut hereby gives notice of public hearings to be held on Thursday, September 5th, 2024 at 7:00 PM by remote technology to consider the applications listed below. Information regarding how to participate in the public hearings will be provided on the commission's meeting's agenda that will be posted on the town's website at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. Application number 24-7.1, special exception for a two-family dwelling located at 80 East Main Street, 80 East Main Street LLC in care of Patrice Robinson, applicant and owner. Application 24-7.2, special exception for automobile leasing located at 4 Lees Lane, L-Rac LLC in care of attorney Bernard Pellegrino, applicant, A.J.G.G. Realty LLC in care of Paul Manicino, owner. An application 24-8.2, special exception for a gasoline filling station and retail store above 3,000 square foot located at 5 East Industrial Road, A&amp;R LLC in care of Aman La, applicant, Fusco Branford Industrial in care of Louis Arpefi, owner. At said hearings, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies are on file in the Planning and Zoning Commission's office at the Planning and Zoning Department, 1019 Main Street, Branford, Connecticut, O6405. Writ communications may be sent to the above address or to planningandzoning@branford娣go. Branford Planning and Zoning Commission, see Andres, chairperson.
Chuck Anders, chair. Thank you, Fred. We'll follow a normal format for public hearings, which is the applicant will go first, make its presentation, including any expert consultants. After the applicant is done, we turn it over to the commission and staff. Typically, here a summary of a staff report, open it up for questions and comments by commission members. When we're done with that, then we have the public portion of the public hearing. And I'll be asking Evan to review the process for going through that in a moment. But it will basically state your name and record for the, state your name and address for the record, make your comments. After the public portion is done, we allow the applicant to respond to public comments. And then we turn it back over to the commission and staff. We may or may not close the public hearing. It's certainly not unusual to have a matter extend more than one meeting. And with that, I'm going to ask Evan to explain the process for participating as a member of the public or the app.
Sure. When prompted, down at the bottom of your screen is a raise hand button. You can click this or type into the chat that you'd like to participate. We ask that everyone please state their name at the beginning of their comment or question. If you're dialing in by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. And again, we ask that everyone please state their name at the beginning of their comment or question.
Chuck Anders, chair. Thank you, Evan. So with that, we'll proceed with our agenda. Items number, starting with items number one and two, these are, this is Faulkner Island Development LLC. They're the applicants, Anthony J. Lasala, trustee is the owner, 1201 West Main Street. Special exception postal site plan for motor vehicle services and also a special exception for grading. This is a matter that we have opened the public hearing. I think we opened it in July and continued it in from the August 7th meeting. So this is continuation. There were a number of questions and issues that have been raised at the initial hearing. I believe there's a number of public comments. So is the applicant ready to proceed with that?
Mr. Bruton, I made you a co-host. You should be able to unmute yourself at will and share your screen if you'd like. You're muted right now. So there you go. Now you're all set. Yeah, you're a little soft.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. Thanks, Harry. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for the record. My name is Matthew Bruton. I'm a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut from BL Companies. Our headquarters at 355 Research Parkway in Meriden, Connecticut. You've seen my colleague Tim Hool at prior meetings. He's on vacation this week, so I'm stepping in. With me tonight is Michael Kirkker, a traffic engineer from BL Companies, and also the applicant as well. Jeff and Adam are here as well for any questions that you may have of them. So I'll share my screen and let me know if you guys can, you guys can see this. I'll just kind of do a quick overview of the plans. As I know, we haven't been back here in a bit. And hopefully, I'll pass it to my colleague to talk about traffic and then answer any questions you guys may have. So just as a reminder, I have on the screen here. You guys see, are you seeing the aerial?
We are. We are.
Okay. So just as a reminder, obviously, we are a little bit, a little less than a half an acre parcel in the local business zone designated by the red tag here. It's currently in a vacant parcel adjacent to the Chase and Aldi development. As you can see from the aerial here, that's under construction. Obviously, we're frontage on Route 1 and Main Street where my mouse is kind of hovering over now. I'm going to bring the survey up as just a reminder of the existing conditions. So I'll just highlight briefly. This is the parcel in question with Chase and Aldi over here. So in general, all right, vacant parcel, topography varies from 51 feet towards the rear, 31 towards the frontage. We're outside of any significant flood zone and there's no wetlands on the property but are on the adjacent property. We've already received approval from that commission. Jumping forward to the proposed site plan, we're looking to construct a little over 1,700 square foot motor service vehicle facility. Take five is the franchise. As you can see, obviously, the 1,700 square foot building placed here. We do have a single access drive down to Main Street. As you can see, it kind of comes down here. We do have that as a full access in and a right out, which we will discuss a little bit further. To show you again, some of the site features, obviously, customers would come in, circle around the building in a clockwise fashion to queue up and then to be able to pull in and then through the building. We do show 10 parking, 10 dedicated parking spaces, four in the front, another six in the rear. We do have a dedicated dumpster enclosure towards the rear of the parcel. I'm circling here with my hands. We do again show improvements of proposed sidewalks along the frontage of our driveway. And that does obviously connect and extend into our site and into the main door of the facility along the frontage there. Let's quickly jump to the grading and drainage. Obviously, the goal for this plan, because there's an increase in impervious area from the existing conditions, is to comply with, like a stormwater manual, erosion control guidelines along with town guidelines. Goal overall is to match drainage patterns, favors post-slow mitigation, and obviously to improve water quality. How we're doing that is catch basins with deep dumps and hoods, subsurface infiltration systems of isolator rows that do connect and discharge to the municipal system in the right of way, just in the grass area adjacent to Main Street and Route 1. The system is designed for the 2, 10, 25, and 100-year storm events. We have obviously provided an operation and maintenance manual as well for the applicant and owner to follow, make sure the system complies not only after day one of construction, but for the life of the system to make sure it operates as designed as well. Moving forward, obviously, all public utilities are available either onsite or within the right of way. So that includes water, sewer, gas, electric, and telephone to support the building here. Moving quickly forward to erosion control, obviously, the goal is to provide an erosion control plan for the contract to install and follow from day one so that the butters, the town infrastructure, and obviously, public streets are all protected during the construction phase. So what we like to say is this is installed and obviously being maintained throughout construction. And the devices should be kept in place until the site is stabilized. So we have the prototypical items that are industry standards for erosion and sedimentation control. So we have things like silt stacks, silt fences, erosion control matting, soil stockpile areas, and construction entrances to be able to do that during construction. That should protect obviously the adjacent infrastructure and the butters. And then lastly, before I pass it over to my colleagues to talk about traffic, we do obviously have a pretty robust landscaping plan to obviously comply with town regulations, but also to make the site aesthetically pleasing for employees, visitors, customers. So as you can see here, obviously, we have a robust variety of trees and shrubs and grasses, not only along the perimeter of the site, but also within landscape islands. And obviously, we think it's a good inviting plan that will match well with the adjacent developments. So that's kind of a high-level recap of the proposed site plan and existing conditions. I'm going to pass it over to my colleague Mike Kirkker to talk briefly about driveway and traffic conditions for this proposed development. And then we're happy to answer any questions that staff or the commission or the public have. So I will stop sharing now and let my colleague take over.
I'm Mike Kirkker, BL Companies. Do I have the ability to share my screen? I just have a couple slides to share. It shouldn't be too long, but do I have that ability?
Harry, is that something that Mike can have access to or Evan?
Yeah, you're both, Harry and Evan, you're both muted.
Sorry about that.
Sorry, I thought I unmuted myself. I apologize. Mike, you have the ability to share your screen. You're a co-host.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Are you able to see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
We are. And just a reminder, if you could send that to us so we can include it in the file for the application, that would be very helpful.
Definitely. Yep.
Thank you.
So as Matt had said, he went over the basics of the site. So this slide, just a reiteration of the site location itself. But I'll kind of get more into the trip generation and the traffic and the traffic as well. So ITE is the Institute of Transportation Engineers that essentially gives us the amount of trips that are projected to be generated for this type of land use. So there are studies that are used to help estimate these numbers based on, in this case, it's based on the square footage. So it's based on every thousand square feet. So this would be the 1735 square feet. And that projection or ITE notes that that would generate 10 a.m. peak hour trips, 15 p.m. peak hour trips, as well as 122 daily trips. I will note that the client currently has two sites that are in operation in West Haven and Stratford. And ITE itself is very conservative when comparing to those other two sites. Based on their data, they generate between seven, depending on the site, 17 or 18 daily trips, which is obviously just a fraction of what we're showing here as a daily amount of traffic. So IT in this case is more conservative, but for the purposes of peak hour, to determine the amount of peak hour trips, we wanted to use obviously the most conservative. So if you were to look at the 10, the 10 trips, there is a pass-by allowance, which are vehicles that would, that would be passing by the site on their way to the destination. And that, they're not exactly counted as net new trips added. They're more so just trips that are on their way to their destination. They stop at the site and then continue on their way. But even if we were to look at that, those numbers without any pass-by, so the 10 a.m. peak hour, p.m., 15 p.m. peak hour, and distribute that traffic evenly to being the right turns entering 50%, and then the left turns entering 50%. So just to kind of give more of a visual saying, 50% coming in to make the left turn in, and then 50% coming either from left or right off of US Route 1 and making the right in. We assume a 50% distribution. That would mean that we're then having between three and four trips that would be making the left turns in, meaning this movement again. So three to four trips making that left turn in in the peak hour, which is the equivalent of one trip every 15 or 20 minutes, depending on the peak hour you're looking at. So it has a very limited effect on the, on the existing roadway network based on the trips that are being generated as a comparison of other potential sites. I know that obviously, a lot of these, a lot of these sites are already in this area. I know that there's already a bank in the area. I know that there's several of these are already in this area. But just to kind of give a comparison of what the daily trips that would be generated, this type of land use is going to generate very few daily trips when in comparison to nearly most any other land use. So you're looking at the 122 daily trips as a comparison to a drive-in bank, a coffee shop, a gas station, a fast food restaurant with a drive-through. So just kind of, it just kind of highlights the limited amount of traffic impact that this would have when compared to other land uses. That's just more of a high level, higher level traffic based on the trip generation. And I guess if there's any questions, I will be happy to take them.
So Mr. Commissioner, I think that concludes our presentation. But as Michael said, happy to answer any questions. And the applicant is here as well if there's questions for them. So we'll pass it back to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bruton. Harry, why don't we start with you with the staff report of the additional comments?
I'm Harrison, the town planner. I have not really completed my review, though I don't think the revised plans contain a significant difference from the plans in the staff report. I think some of the other comments I've had have been adequately reviewed. I think it really boils down at this point to concerns that have been raised. And I'll say traffic, but it's not really traffic and traffic numbers. What is what I've been hearing expressed from commissioners as well as other folks that have commented during the public hearing, it's primarily concern, I think, about that left turn into the site. I have talked about this with the town engineer, and I'm going to put up on my screen a memo he sent, which I sent to the applicant shortly before the meeting, as well as the commission. So let me share my screen. So hopefully, you can see this is the memo, actually, the email dated today. And it says, "I've reviewed the latest plans dated 8/3/2024 for the study development. Although the applicant's engineer provided response to my concerns with a proposed entrance, DOT has not provided any approval. They still have reservations in the design. Over recognizing I am not a professional traffic engineer, the commission may want to consider a traffic peer review of the site." All of the comments were addressed by the applicant's engineer. That's a comment from our town engineer. I also sent a memorandum to the commission and the applicant and just specified this section of the regulations under which commission could request a peer review if you feel that's irrelevant and appropriate. And the chapter of the town ordinance is also applicable to peer reviews. So I don't, now we, I think this is the first public hearing session we've had a traffic engineer at, if I'm correct. And I don't know if the commission wants to pose any questions of him. I have a question. Maybe I'll just wait until we'll see what commission members have to say at this point. Thank you.
Chuck Anders, chair. Thank you, Harry. Okay, let's, let's open up to the commission staff. We have questions for the traffic engineer. I guess I'll, I'll ask one is, I haven't heard any opinions about safety. I know you did review the, you did emphasize the low traffic volume. And I understand that. But the concern of the left turn in and just the, the entrance being so close to the turning where it's supposed to go, which is, and it's, it's a continuous turn. I mean, it's a note. Everyone just keeps going even though there's a light there. You just turn right there and the entrance is so close. So I, I mean, I guess that would be a question. Do you have an opinion? Is this a safe for the left turn? The left turn in is a very safe one, but even right turns, you know, the exit, I guess it's a right turn only. But for, for the traffic that's, that's going, I guess, eastbound and turning right in and the intersection is right there. Do you have an opinion as, as whether this is safe?
So, Mr. Chairman, this is Matt for BL for the record. Let me just jump in and say this, and then Mike can add that to the nitty or grittier technical aspect of that. So just so everyone's aware, obviously, this driveway connection, I think, hopefully you guys are seeing my screen again. This driveway connection to Main Street is obviously a state route. So that requires, once we have approval from your commission, the planning and zoning side, for us to acquire an encroachment permit from the DOT. So this is, this is a DOT road. They have, they have done their review of this driveway in this orientation. And the comments we've had to date from them were in regards to the geometry, but also the placement of the driveway. Obviously, this is a very unique lot in terms of placement on the kind of curvature of, of Main Street and West Main. The only concern that DOT has to date was the getting us concurrence from the neighbor to the left-hand side of the stream here, so to the, to the east about the driveway within front of their frontage. And also the ability for us to potentially share driveway interconnectivity with that abutment. We have spoken with that abutting property. And just to give you context, that size, our parcel obviously here is highlighted in gray. The abutment is number three here, the additional half an acre. We have coordinated with that abutment about the placement of our driveway to the satisfaction of the DOT. And we've also negotiated in the future, if there's ever developments on that parcel, that we have left room for a potential interconnection. So Harry's concerns and the town engineer's concerns of a potential peer reviewer, I'll say that that's built into this process because really, that's the jurisdiction of the DOT. If they're, if they come down and say, hey, this isn't safe, or this is concerning, or they want some modification to what we're proposing to you now, it is completely within their jurisdiction to do so. And even after construction, if this is built how we, how we show here and how we think it functions, and it doesn't function that way, and they want us to request changes, that is completely within their power to make it, make modifications. So I'd say from the applicant's standpoint, from my standpoint, I don't think a peer reviewer is necessary because this is kind of out of the town's jurisdiction and the DOT's hands. And all the indications from DOT far is that they're going to approve this as is. Again, they will not do that until we have local approval. But I'll pass it to Mike to add any other additional details or flavors to the actual movements and cars. So what you, what you spoke to and asked, Mr. Sharon.
Yeah. So Mike Kirkker again from BL. So while this typically a full traffic study is done for anything that's generating 100 or more trips. So that's, we actually had a, had a site nearby, I guess I would say. We had a site nearby that we looked at that already had a model set up based on existing volumes. And it does, it shows that there are, it operates, that it operates at a level of service B, which is more than acceptable, and that there would be enough gaps to make the turns into the site. Like Matt had said, as long as the design, since the design is meeting the DOT's process for minimum distance from the intersection, that would all be reviewed in the encroachment permit process. But in terms of the gaps itself to make a, to make a, to make a turn into the site, there are the gaps to be able to make that turn into the site. And the sight lines, we've already talked as well about ensuring that the sight lines, in all cases. I know at one point there were, there are potential trees along curb lines. I know we talked about removing those to make sure that sight lines are met in all directions. So there is the visibility regardless of the movement, regardless of the opposing movement off of Route 1.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkker. So do you have an opinion as to whether this is a safe design?
Safe, safe is a, safe is a very arbitrary term, just because I, I have, we haven't done a crash, we haven't done a crash history of this location. And in terms of it, as long as, if it's meeting the DOT's requirements, that's what would come up during the DOT process. Safe is, unfortunately, and like Matt said, maybe it's something that this is worth looking, worth reassessing once it's in construction. But in terms of it being safe operation, it's, I, it's, I guess it's like an, almost arbitrary enough that I can't say, just because it's very subjective. There are the gaps to be able to make the turns. That's, that's, that's where, that's the traffic component, that there are the gaps to make the turns. There are the sight lines to be able to make the turns, to make that, to make the turns as well, to be able to see in all directions.
But it sounds, Chuck Anders, chair, but it sounds like you're not willing to say, but your reputation on the line, say yes, you believe it's safe. I mean, I, I don't know. Did I mishear you?
Mr. Commissioner, what Michael's saying is there, there's no checklist that says safe. There's checklist for gaps. There's checklist for sight lines. There are checklist for volumes. There's distance to intersections. We are checking all those components. There's no, there's no safe checkbox in terms of an encroachment permit. So we're going by all the DOT standards for a driveway in terms of what would function operationally. We're checking those boxes. There's no safe, safe box, but all the components of what we think for a fully operational driveway for a business of this size are there.
Okay, Chuck Anders, chair. So you never opine? That's what it sounds like. You just opine whether it meets standards? Never whether it's safe or unsafe? I mean, I...
The standards are set in place to make sure that, that they're, that they're as safe as they can be. Will there be accidents here? We could never say no. People, people crash all the time for a variety of reasons. But for, for this business with this driveway, with this orientation, there's standards that we need to hit. We've hit those standards and DOT will be the arbitrator and enforcer to make sure that what we propose is working and functioning.
Will, will the DOT require crash history?
Yes.
It will? Okay. It sounds like that's a bit of information that might be helpful in evaluating that hasn't been done. I, but, and I, and I understand what you're saying, that DOT makes the decision, but, okay. Okay. Other questions, comments from commission members?
I've got one. Joe Chadwick speaking. Has, had any effort been made to try to consolidate the entrance and use the Aldi entrance? We have sort of a priority in towns where we have commercial units, commercial properties adjoining each other to minimize the number of curb cuts. I'm kind of bothered by the amount of topography that has to be adjusted for oil change stations. Um, I'm I'm kind of bothered by the amount of topography that has to be adjusted for an oil change station. And then to have to make a driveway that goes down at a place where I know is really congested because I drive by there every day. Um, has has any attempt been made to at least mitigate the um further congestion of that site by having someone enter through the Aldi's parking lot and sort of come in through the back?
Yeah, uh, Commissioner Chadwick, uh, map rooting against the record. It's an excellent question, and that was it was uh very much considered. And I'll have a unfortunately uh unfortunate answer for you, but here is the Google Street View. Obviously, our site is to the left. The existing chase facility, as you can see here on the right where my mouse is. Uh, it really preclude the interconnection between this is really um it's not feasible because of the uh the grade change between the two sites. Um, you have to significantly cut or 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 blast or do something to to make this work. Uh, so it's just between the the great changes between the sites really don't work for an intersection. It's too steep. Uh, it was considered it was obviously would be ideal to get access to the light here. I think that would benefit uh the businesses. Uh, unfortunately, it's not possible, but I will say that we did look at it. We did. It was considered as part of the project.
It it's not possible or it's not inexpensive?
Uh, it's not possible. I mean, there's the you can see there that it's I mean, that drop is is upwards of ten to fifteen, twenty feet, depending on where the driveway would be placed. So um it's it's not really a a a feasible solution between uh between the businesses. But we have, obviously, as I mentioned before, put in 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 place, had the discussions with the adjacent neighbor uh for a a shared connection there where the topography is more conducive to a connect connection, and they've they've agreed to that if that site were ever to be developed, which I think is a a good attempt to to minimize curb cuts, uh, obviously, in a in a busy area of your town.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Joe. Uh, Mr. Bruton, other questions, comments from commission members?
Uh, Fred Russo. Uh, I I would uh just what I see is a a parcel of land that's joined by two lar- much larger parcels of land that have a much larger volume of traffic. It almost seems ironic that the the parcel that will take the least amount of traffic could probably create the most amount of problems. Um, the the uh Aldi property does have a stoplight, which is a very good thing and and well controlled the traffic. And the condo does not have a stoplight. But I think, you know, the the fact that this has the it's almost like the straw that breaks the camel's back, that these two large entities have uh having a lot of traffic. And the smallest entity, you know, as it stands alone, shouldn't really be a problem. But it seems to me that it could be a problem. My other concern is is that, and I was gonna ask Mr. Bruton, the other two locations that you mentioned that the applicant has, do they do anything other than um oil changes? Do they do batteries? Do they rotate tires? Do they um some places even do tune ups and stuff? Just curious, to what extent would this particular location ask? Because I think it would then affect the amount of traffic that it it takes. Because sometimes when you're doing when it takes more time to work on a car, people could leave their car. So you're gonna have additional traffic uh because of the length of time it takes to service a particular vehicle. So I was just wondering, the in in the other two locations that the applicant has, do they do anything other than oil changes?
Sure, Mr. Russo, uh, great question. Thank you. Uh, so uh your first part of your question about traffic lights, obviously, there's um a formula, a traffic warrant that that are in place um for our traffic engineers to evaluate sites, whether a traffic signal makes sense or not. Right? So for some development, it's triggered, as you can see, obviously, with Aldi Chase, which DL was a part of. A traffic light makes absolute sense there, the size of the developments, the trips that are generated. It makes sense, and that works. That works out well. Um, a a business like this, that's very small, and as Michael said, generates almost literally no traffic. Uh, you can you can not even really think of anything on a commercial basis that would generate less traffic wouldn't come anywhere near to requiring a light. Right? So that's to to the first part of your question. Um, I'll defer to the applicants, but my understanding of take five is obviously the oil change is a big part of their business. Uh, the only other things I'm aware that they do is they do windshield wiper replacements. Uh, they would do an air filter replacement. Um, and then a a coolant or, you know, topping up fluids, coolant or anti-free. So really, this is a a business where they're not trying to let you get out of your car. You're not sitting there. You're not doing major engine repairs. You're not spending a lot of time. This is hopefully something that takes five minutes. So uh it those are very limited, small services that are done uh that allow you to come in, pull through and pull out and and get on with your day and get back to work or home.
Right, I uh, Mr. I have one other question. Um, i- it it seems, you know, at least the way it's been uh explained uh here at the meeting, that the impact, you know, with traffic is is fairly low by comparison to the the surrounding businesses. I I guess one of the questions, and I I'm not I I'm not sure if it's a fair question, but it it's in my mind, so I'm gonna raise it anyway. And that is that if you have a seventeen hundred square foot building and that particular business doesn't do enough business, that's not on us, that's on the the property owner. But if I was a property owner, my I the business I had was not doing the kind of business it took to pay the bills, I'd have to go out and look for another tenant. And my concern would be, and as I said, you know, I have no basis to say, well, here's proof of it, is that the next business that comes and occupies it, and it's not as has does not have such a low impact with traffic, but has a much higher impact than traffic. So I I think that regardless of what the business is that that is gonna go in there initially is partially relevant. I think what's more relevant is how that property as it stands, how it enters and exits traffic is important because we don't know what the next business or the next business after that is going to be. Or if this existing business decides at some point in time that it wants to expand its services, we don't know that. Wha- what we're looking at is is something kind of in a in a capsule. We're saying, you know, low impact, only oil changes. I with all of that, I I one time he says, yeah, listen, you know, you can't say tell a an applicant you can't do that. But my concern goes uh deeper than that, saying that, you know, once a building is built, whether it's a changing oil, you know, for the first year or two, we don't know what's gonna happen, but that building is always gonna be there. And whatever traffic problems it may have with a very low impact business, maybe even worse with a high impact business. And so that's that's my concern. I don't know if there's an answer to this. Maybe a a peer review for traffic would help, maybe a crash study would help. But uh a- at this moment, I'm I'm na- I'm 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 convinced what you're saying is true with the with the a low impact business, but I'm not certain that a a different type of business might create the kind of problems that we're concerned of it concerned about right now. So th- those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Russo, now that's a that's a I I completely understand your concern. It's a great question. Uh, what I'll answer to that, and 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 Harry or Evan can jump in is we're applying for a very specific thing that we're detailing out very, very detailed to you now, right? It's a take five. These are a number of parking spaces. This is how the business operates. Obviously, me, you, anybody can't control the economy, how successful a business will be in year one, year five, year 10, right? So what I'll say, though, is that there's any change to this site for a different use, uh, expansion of services, expansion to the building, expansion of the parking lot, that's gonna trigger this applicant or a a future landowner to come back to this commission to seek permission for those changes. And at that point will be, hey, uh, you know, has the roadway changed? Has the neighborhood changed? What's this new use? Um, so I think that's something that you can take comfort in is what we're proposing is what's only allowed here. If there were changes, it's gonna trigger a new application that would have to come back through through town staff and back to this commission.
Thank you.
Um, you're welcome.
Harry Smith, town planner. I mean, that's true to an extent. Um, there is the possibility of a use of coming in basically in the same category this is. Um, and again, just to go back to sort of the argument someone made before, um, how much authority the commission has to review it versus the DOT's authority? You know, once the driveway configuration permitting process is there? I mean, I don't know how what their process is to evaluate each individual land use that might be. It could be massively different or just a little bit different in terms of trip generation. Um, enough to create a problem or not? I don't know. I'm not a traffic engineer, obviously, or traffic planner. Um, so I think that is part of what I see is of concern is that um there may be additional information that um a peer review might uncover as either needed or questions that might be raised by someone who is um looking at it with that level of expertise uh from the reviewer's viewpoint rather than necessarily the uh the applicant's viewpoint. So um I'll just throw that out there.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Gary. Uh, other comments from commission members or staff before we open up to the public?
Hi, this is Marcy Colzy. Can I ask a few questions?
Absolutely.
So the picture that they showed showed a gravel road wrapping up and around the front of the bank. What is the purpose of that road and is that about your property? And if the rise of your property, I don't remember the exact number, was, you know, fairly significant from the front to the back, obviously, you're gonna be excavating quite a bit of material to bring that gra- down to the suitable grades. What is the vertical impact to the condos? What is the distance to the condos and the impact of idling cars and smells and whatnot on the residential neighborhood? Well, I'm just trying to remember everything I'm thinking, so if I'm jumping too fast, I apologize. Um, why is there not, and maybe I miss it, a sidewalk on the the roadway? There's many people that walk there, and if there's sort of more traffic crossing, I think it'd be important to have a sidewalk there. And lastly, I mean, the numbers may say what they are, but you know, take just this scenario. If I'm trying to drive through to exit fifty-three from Main Street or to go to Coles and, you know, I'm gonna tend to wanna be in the left lane. If there's someone in front of me waiting to turn into the property, they're gonna be waiting to turn regardless of what the light is doing um at the intersection. But yet the traffic coming from the opposite direction can freely turn right, which is gonna, in my opinion, even if it's one car waiting, well, the traffic can create a a significant inconvenience for what is already an inconvenient situation because that light, which has nothing to do with the site access to your property, but is already a slow left lane, you can already sit there at many times during the day through multiple light signals. I can't imagine, you know, what a car trying to make a left-hand turn into the facility would do to the temperaments of the people waiting. And then lastly, you know, it's a hundred and twenty-two cars a day. They have to exit to the right, which means we're now putting that traffic on the roadway towards the center of town, whether they wanna be there or not. And they're gonna be looking to cut through Cherry Hill Road in which is a residential zone for for the sole purpose of getting turned around to get onto fifty-three South. You know, when they leave the facility, if that's the direction what they wanna go to because they can't make that left-hand turn out of the facility. So I think, you know, these are very these are reasonable situations and scenarios that are gonna happen that I just, you know, to me, you know, are huge red flags. So I mean, maybe you could give me some more detail, like I said, on the neighborhood and the distance and the vertical change of your property to the condos and and, you know, separations and all that, if you would.
Absolutely. Um, a map rooting against the record. Uh, so I think I got all your questions, uh, but if I missed something, please, please jump back in. Uh, so the the first one, I'll just take them as I remembered them. So the the first uh question I think you had or one of the first ones was the gravel road adjacent on Chase. So um this obviously this aerial isn't fully um showing the full construction, but you can roughly see that gravel drive where my mouse is right here. That is an accessway um that wasn't paved. It was left gravel intentionally. An accessway that winds through the back of the parcel to access uh stormwater management in a in a wetland area to the rear of this parcel. Uh, that is off of our parcel, that is that is solely on the Aldi Chase development. Uh, that is to remain and to stay um i- intentionally as part of their approval to access the rear there. Um, in terms of the topography of our site, so I'm gonna go back just quickly to show you uh the existing conditions so you can see that. So o- obviously, Main Street is at the bottom of the page. If I go to the rear, you can see obviously the grade that's climbing towards the rear, forty-six up to fifty-one. I'm going down the road, you can see kind of this this continuous slope down to around thirty-one at the property line, and then it continues a little bit to, you know, thirty-two, twenty-eight. So it's obviously sloped from the road all the way to the back. Uh, if I bring you back to our proposed grading and drainage plan, one second here. Uh, so um I'll just bring you to the back here because it's the closest to the residence. So uh you can see, obviously, in this upper corner here, I'll highlight. You can see we're obviously matching grades. We're we're doing only earthwork within our property, so we have kind of fifty-four at the highest here. As we come into the site, we obviously need to create a safe pad for the building, parking, ADA accessibility. So as we come down, we do introduce retaining walls um to to kind of uh to create the earthwork to create the pad site. So this is gonna be higher and the pad will be much lower. So I not only will the residents uh be buffered from this development by um distance, horizontal distance, but they'll have vertical separation for uh not only the trees and the the landscape buffer that we're providing, but we're also gonna be down in a hole and and as as we kind of uh match the grade. So in general, obviously, the finished floor of this building is thirty-seven, and you can see the highest point is fifty-four, so there's a pretty good difference vertically. And we're lower, not being propped up or or presented in any way. Um, if I go to your GIS map, just so you can see more clearly, obviously, our parcel here is shown as the highlighted gray rectangle. You can see there's actually two more parcels in between our parcel and the residential development on Rockledge here. So uh, you know, we're we're a hundred plus feet at the nearest point to our property, and obviously, the building is situated more kind of in where this number two is. So um, you know, we're a hundred plus feet away from the residential development. And uh also, there's a there's a there's another parcel in between us, right? So there's a a wooded a wooded area here that that isn't being developed. It's not it's not our property. Uh, in terms of of access, uh, I did mention upfront that I think it's part of staff comment. A side sidewalk is important. Uh, so we do show um sidewalk along the frontage here, highlighting yellow that connects to the existing sidewalk system for walkability. That sidewalk also does come up uh the site, and I'll continue over here to our front door. So even though this is not a um business that is um centered on, you know, uh bike traffic or walkable traffic, obviously, this is a motor vehicle use, we have provided access for people to visit the site via foot or by bike or employees to do the same, and it is connected to the um uh, you know, obviously, the uh the the existing sidewalk network. Um, I'll say this else, obviously, this is zoned local business. So uh although it's uh maybe not what people envisioned, the the town zoning map does call for this to be a a local business zone where where uses like this can be involved. Uh, it's not zoned residential, it's not zoned open state. So um to me, in my opinion, the size of this lot, you can't really find a better use for this property. Anything else would be way more intense, way more traffic, uh, you know, not a great neighbor. This is a small lot that's been designated for commercial. We're finding honestly, one of the smallest possible commercial uses here that is generating a a very small amount of traffic. So um you know, I I I just throw that out there for the commission to consider. It's zoned for commercial business. We're trying to put in a very small business with with no traffic that at conformance of your zoning regulations. I don't know if um Mike wants to add anything or if I missed anything, uh, but um.
So um so how high are those walls and how much lower is the site than the Aldi's access road? I assume that that access road about your property? Maybe I'm incorrect about that.
Yeah, so let me go back real quick. So the retaining walls, um, I obviously, uh, you're if you're familiar with your zoning regulations, you guys have um restrictions on the height of your retaining walls. But we actually have a uh it's really a two-staged retaining wall, and I'll just maybe highlight that just a little bit more clearly for you here. So we do show a retaining wall here. It steps down, and then there's another retaining wall here because you guys have a max tight retaining wall. So these retain- So these retaining walls are
Yep.
in this in this corner, three feet, you know, no more than four feet. So they're, they're small, but they're they're staggered to get down to the site. Um, we're at elevation thirty-seven and a quarter. Um, I don't know Aldi off the or Chase off the top of my head. Um, but it's a- as you can see, let me see if I can bring this photo over. Um.
Yeah, because it seems like you should be able
Significantly less.
And that's a connection around to the front.
Yeah, so you can see here the, oop, what that load? This is significantly lowered. You can see light poles, you can see even the height of this building, you can see stop signs here. We are ten fifteen.
Is a body of your property. I mean, couldn't you, couldn't you develop an access agreement using that service road? Because the grades are already coming right down to the property.
Yeah, this 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 access road is not designed for commercial public traffic. It it doesn't fall with, it falls within setbacks, it's gravel. It was intended for this development for for maintenance access to the rear of the parcel. Um, it's not acceptable in terms of a a commercial public driveway. Uh, and the topography, as you can see, is is very, very steep.
Yeah, Harry Smith Town Planner, yeah, I not sure, could not be converted. Could it be improved and could it, I'm looking at it sort of turning the curve there. At some point around there, I think you're talking about the property line and the right-of-way line for um your property is about somewhere in there. And I think the the grade separation seems to increase as you're going further away from Route One. It's hard to tell from that, but it seems like there are points there where there's not much of a grade separation, whether you could enter your property at that point somehow, as Marcy's suggesting. And of course, it would require you to completely redesign your site plan because you're assuming your entrance is gonna be on the on the east side of the property, but um I I don't know. I guess we would, someone would need to evaluate that to show you can't really do it in terms of converting it or changing it. And you can see down in that corner, you go further down, not there, but closer to Route One. That says, "Don't drive," you keep going down towards the uh with the property line and the right-of-way meet down around there, whether you could stay having that sharp turn. I mean, you gotta keep that road, but having, you know, an offshoot into the property, I don't know.
Yeah.
Given the fact you're scrubbing, clearing and regrading everything, whether it's impossible to work it, I don't know. But.
Right. I'll just point this out, guys, the 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 site here right outside the building is thirty-seven. You can see we have a retaining wall here, thirty-six, thirty-five, thirty-four. We're dropping seven feet right now. So i- it's not, it's not a viable connection. And then all along this side, this boundary to Chase and Aldi, everything in red here is also a retaining wall. It does not work.
Well, I mean, you're changing the grades there. I mean, the driveway itself is, you know, it's, as you enter the site, you're grading that up, correct? To make that
We are grading
Rise as gentle as possible.
Flat, a flat pad for a building in a development. Right now, the 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 topography steadily climbs up. We need to create a pad site for safe access, flat driveways, uh, you know, accessibility for ADA parking spaces. We are not, we are not going to be able to chop this site down and comply with your regulations for your restrictions on slopes and maximum retaining wall height. It does not work.
So you've done the analysis or you're just sort of eyeballing it? And I'm not saying you're incorrect, I'm just saying, uh, you know, those restrictions do apply, of course, but.
Yeah, you got, you're, you're, not only is this site only a half an acre, but you guys have restrictions on thickness of slopes and the maximum height of retaining walls. I cannot, I cannot comply with those portions of your regulations and interconnect with the vast difference uh of topography on the Chase site.
Even down to the right-of-way line.
Correct. If I were to lower this building and this parking lot to be able to connect in this corner, the retaining walls on the back would be above what you allow in terms of height.
Is that because you're doing so much grading in the right-of-way to get your driveway up before it even hits the property? So that's how you're making it work?
I'd have to.
Because it looks like that's what's going on.
I'd have to lower this site to 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 match in this corner, but that would all then allow a more significant cut in the rear of this parcel, which would put it over the the maximum height you allow for a chain wall.
Yeah, I'm just looking at how it works now because you're bringing, bringing the drive-in basically at an elevation to make it as gently, you can see the the grading lines are extending into the right-of-way. Are they not?
Yep. Yeah, they are. Yep, this is the, this is the property line here.
Yeah, you've got a fair amount of fill there, right? Is that a five foot, ten foot?
So thirty, thirty-two to thirty-six here, yeah.
So where that driveway is, you're bringing the grade of that up from current conditions, fairly significant, right? Certainly.
Uh, so it is, uh, let me see here. So look, uh, this is, the the light gray here is elevation thirty-three. You can see we have thirty-three here. Uh, so as we come into the site, it is slightly rising as it gets into the property line. Obviously, you can see this is elevation, this is thirty-four, we're at thirty-six. As we get into here, though, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, and as we get to the middle of the site, we're at forty-two. The site, the building's at thirty-seven. So it's it's a, it's a blend of fill in the front, cut in the back to create a a a a pad site that allows all the restrictions and all the setbacks and all the things that are required to operate this business.
It is a little tight.
The understatement. You guys made us really work hard on this one.
I think the site made you work hard. There's a reason why it's still been vacant all these years, you know, it's tough.
Yeah, and to my, to my point of this is this is zoned local business, I don't know of any other commercial development that I've worked on in the past fifteen years that would work on a site like this. It's it's a very small commercial development with a low amount of requirements for parking spaces and a very low traffic demand. Uh, the only thing else lower than this would be a single-family house.
E- excuse me, did we do any kind of count on large trees that are gonna have to come down as a result of the clearing? Were they, was that picked up on the survey information?
I didn't see where there's a um, that is missing information. There is a plan that indicates that basically the entire site's gonna be cleared and grubbed, but in terms of IDing um uh significant trees that are gonna be removed, that is actually a requirement of the regulations. I have not highlighted my reports, I apologize. I don't know if there are any, these would be trees uh mat over twelve inches um in diameter to measure to breast height, uh four and a half feet above the ground.
I I just think in a sense I have many or, you know, overall.
Yep, and obviously, I I can um, I I can speak to that uh specifically, but obviously, you can see the robust landscaping plan we do have here. Um, you can see trees alone were fifty-plus trees. Uh, obviously, from from maple, hollies, red oaks, arborvitae. Um, so we're at, we are, you know, replacing what's cut down with with a significant amount uh of trees, especially around the perimeter of the site and along the frontage. Um, but if I, I, we have to identify significant trees, obviously. Um, anything on the perimeter that would be safe, we would. Um, but in reality, if you did have to come down, we obviously are are um proposing a robust planting to to comply with the regulations.
Chuck, can I share, are there other questions, comments from commission members or staff before we open up to the public?
Yeah, um Sharon Hutner here.
Sure.
Um, I would um like to reiterate some of the concerns that the commission members have been talking about the traffic. I live in that neighborhood and I go through that intersection daily and at all various times of the day. And I can't even imagine one or two more cars in that mix. I use the, um, there's a gas station right at that triangle corner. And just to get out of that gas station to make a right turn onto one forty-six uh Main Street is definitely a challenge. Um, so I um I can't even imagine what it would be like with any additional traffic. The I also have one more, I have a question. I'm a fairly new member on the commission. So on the um, define clean and grub for me? On the demolition plan.
Yep, so uh I I think I got your question. You you kind of were breaking up a little bit for me, a map written against the record. Yes, the clearing and grubbing is really, it's really um uh removing the existing vegetation, the the shrubs, the invasive, the trees, anything that's there. And also stockpiling uh uh topsoil uh to get down to the subgrade soil. So to get down to the grade that we need uh as shown on this proposed grading and drainage plan. Obviously, any uh trees or any of that uh shrubs or or invasive species would be exported off the site. Soil would be stockpiled on the site and then reused in the landscaping areas that we show on our landscaping plan.
So that means you're going to remove every single green thing on that piece of land?
Yep, so within the boundaries of our of our limit of the service, yes, we we'd be clear-cutting and and then doing our development and then going back and 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 proposing our landscaping plan as I showed that had fifty-plus trees and obviously, there's a variety of shrubs and smaller landscape items as well, but.
Yeah, and so have you, have you had a um a licensed arborist look at that piece of city to see if there are any significant trees there or even significant native trees especially?
Uh, we have not.
That would be um an interesting study. Um, and I appreciate your landscaping plan. Um, I think it's wonderful that you would put seventy-odd trees in that site. And I also commend you for using native varieties as well. But there's something to be said for trees that have been there for twenty-five, fifty years and replaced with brand-new plantings that will take ten, fifteen years to grow. I mean, trees really absorb carbon dioxide at an enormous rate for us. And that particular na- part of our town just doesn't have any trees. It's got a lot of concrete, it's got a lot of road surface, it's got a lot of cars. But trees are not one of the things that we have a lot of in that part of our town. So um I would hate to see those trees, I would hate to see Branford lose those trees. Thank you.
I understand the concern, obviously, obviously, there's a, there's that that blend between development and environment. And obviously, that's what we're trying to uh compensate by, by uh following your regulations for landscaping. I think we've done a a a great job of um adding a significant amount of trees to such a small lot and also uh the placement of those trees to provide that um residential buffer and noise buffer and 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 aesthetic to the site that I think will be, will be um a a great benefit and very attractive site. But I understand your concern.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Chuck, Chuck, can I share, uh, other comments? Marcy, did you have something else?
Yeah, just because we were talking about landscape, I mean, you know, I don't really know what the composition is of the trees that are there, but you know, clearly, they're deciduous trees, which supports one type of ecology and you're replacing them mostly with um ilocks and uh cedar trees, which is another type of ecology. And though they have berries, which is good, you know, I'd like to have a I I'd like to see some consistency in replacing in kind to the 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 ecology since it abuts areas that have wetlands and other, you know, passageways for migration and so forth in terms of like a general ecological overview and analysis. So I mean, so I guess, so that's my issue with the replacement. It's great that you're replacing, but you're not, you're replacing with a different type of ecology of plant nomenclature.
Yeah, I think uh map written against the record. So yeah, I think, I understand your concern. Obviously, we have maples, we have red cedars, uh, things obviously that are deciduous. Uh, but we're also trying to add in that that layer of um screening and buffering as well. So the deciduous trees obviously aren't great for that in seasons where their leaves fall and they're and they're at bare, right? So we didn't want to go fully deciduous because obviously then it doesn't, we're missing the point on maybe neighbor concerns or buffering. So that's why we kind of have that blend where the site will look green all year round and provide uh that kind of blend of deciduous for the ecology and then some of the those um evergreen from a, from a, from a good neighborly standpoint.
Chuck, can I share any other questions, comments from commission members before we open up to the public or staff? Coming down then, let's uh open it up to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment? Um, and I'll hand it over to Evan to handle uh to recognize uh public folks. Evan?
Uh, sure, just to reiterate, down at the bottom of your screen, there's a raise hand button. You can also type into the chat that you'd like to participate or wave your hand in front of the camera, I'll try to catch you. Uh, first up is J.C. Wyatt.
Okay, so you can hear me, right, unmute?
Yep.
Okay, hi, everybody. It's getting darker. I think the lighting's getting bad. But um I just wanted to um voice my opinion on this project. I am a resident in Branford. My name is J.C. Wyatt. And I feel like this is definitely a no for me. I hope this commission really, really looks at this really more deeper. I think we're getting sold a can of beans on what's gonna be built there to a point of the landscaping idea of taking those trees and we'll just demolish it, put a brand-new parking lot in and let's make it work. I think that's the wrong idea. I do think there's other options. I mean, if you're trying to sell us a plan that this is the only business, only where it can go, this is the only way this road can go, which I think that road will be a nightmare into. I don't even know how you can even expect one car to turn left out to that area. So everything is gonna end up getting to the center of town or like someone said to Cherry Hill Road. Um, so I think your traffic is gonna be false to what you're trying to tell us. I, you can't even take a right up that property and keep going before something can even get tangled in that area. I get, you understand what you're trying to do from your drawings, your drawings. You know, they look good on paper sometimes, but they don't look good in reality. And I am absolutely think this is a wrong business to be putting there. If you really want to make it work, you might have to open up your pockets, get the developer to spend more money. They need to connect the road or these properties have to either one day turn over to Rockledge to become maybe a housing that makes it easier, that's all connected, or it does have to connect to the back or the other way of the Aldi disaster that was built there. It shouldn't bring one more road into North Main Street or Main Street there, I'm sorry, Main Street. I think uh, boy, I'm glad I came tonight for some other reason. But just want to say, I hope this commission really looks at it. I think you, you're all talking, you're hearing each other. I don't think I'm hearing an answer other than this is what we want to build, this is what we're gonna do. And I don't think that's right for Branford. I'm a resident, again, as I said, I would never use this business because I think it's like number, what, forty-three auto service place in the town of Branford. I didn't know where the capital of that, but I I I think it's a terrible idea. I understand the owners should turn or find a way to sell the property to Aldi to make an idea of how to build something connecting their property one day or it turns over back to residential to Rockledge somehow, if that makes more sense down the road of how we fix this, that the trees can remain where they're, the right business is not to be located there. It's maybe not supposed to be a business, it needs to be changed back to residential. And I am also concerned on the point that um, what was I gonna ask you, Harry? We're dealing with walkways and hills and I know I've heard a million times. What is that, I guess my question, why are we worried about the sidewalks when the cars are almost gonna be impossible to get in and out of that area? And that would be one of my questions that are there. And if there is other locations that you guys, I think I heard about, or the developer might be using or utilizing in Branford, I'm pretty sure there's another location that isn't this on the top of a rock hill that makes sense for a a car, our, uh, car service. And so the other part is, like I said, which is a big one. They're talking about safety and no one wants to say about safety. So I'm gonna go on the record and say it is no way to come in. So I'm going to go on the record and say it is no way to come in and out of that property to be safe. And that's going to be my final comment. Hopefully I could get an answer to my question.
Chuck Anderson Chair, thank you, Ms. Wyatt. Uh, Evan, who's next?
Next up is Michael Conti.
Uh, sir, I just asked you to unmute. There you are. Okay, now you're, now we can hear you. Wait a minute, you're muted again.
Harry.
Okay. Try again. Still can't hear him.
How about now?
Now, now we can hear you.
Okay. My name is Michael Conti. I live at Rockledge uh, in Branford. And uh, I want to thank the commissioners for talking about the traffic issues. Uh, the issues you're bringing up are really very practical. There's two things. There's the ideal and then there's the practical. The ideal is a hundred and twenty-two, if I'm not mistaken, a hundred and two, twenty-two cars coming in and out to the property. However, no one's mentioned the number of cars that come up by Aldi's taking the right going to the center of Branford. Now there's a right turn on red. The, the ideal is everyone pays attention to it. The practical is that traffic never stops. Never stops. Now you're going to have a business that people coming in from the Aldis coming into the right shouldn't be an issue, but people coming from the center of town taking a left? Have you ever seen that intersection? With the traffic, with honey spot, with the gas station, with Aldies, with people not paying attention to the signs? And you're going to ask people to always take a right to go to the center of town? The ideal is they'll do it. The practical part of it is it won't. So I've heard a hundred and twenty-two cars, but I haven't heard about the hundreds that coming up from exit fifty-three going to the center of town. Also, no one's ever talked about the bus stops there. No one talks about how the bus stops before Rockledge property to either wait to keep the time schedule. So traffic there will be a nightmare and there will be more accidents there. I can see it even when I go into, into New Haven, try to get through, it takes forever to get onto exit fifty, uh, en- entrance fifty-three. So I would really urge the commission to seriously look at the traffic patterns there. Because I believe, as was said by someone else, that is going to be, it's a very dangerous situation. And it looks good on paper. And that's the ideal, but the practical part of it, it is, it will not happen. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Chuck Anderson Chair, thank you, Mr. Conti. Evan, who's next?
Next is uh, Eric Steinlaw.
Hi, um, I'm Eric Steinlaw, uh, resident of Branford. Um, and I just wanted to reiterate one point that came up earlier about pedestrian access. I think it was mentioned that there were sidewalks. Uh, and I was interested to know about the width of those crossings that are proposed for pedestrians. It seemed like in the drawing they were uh, very large radius turns. And I'm interested in like whether drivers will be coming through at high speed uh, and risk making that crossing unsafe for pedestrians who want to continue on to Aldi or elsewhere. Um, and then I have a general comment, which is, I wonder if this project locks in the town to a low, excuse me, uh, roughly low value usage for this land. If the entire lot is paved, then what is the future for this? Can it, can it contribute to the tax base in a meaningful way or is it just a giant parking lot? Uh, and that's it. Thank you.
Chuck Anderson Chair, thank you, Mr. Steinlaw. Evan, do we have anyone else?
Uh, don't see anyone. Just to reiterate, there's the raise hand button or you can type your, uh, that you'd like to participate into the chat. I do not see anyone else.
Okay. Okay, um, does the applicant want to respond to any of the public comments this time?
Yes, um, I could, I could speak to a couple of the, uh, questions, Mike Kerger from BL Companies. Um, so regarding, there was a comment about the lefts out, the left side would be restricted. So that would be the rights that would be made. Let me actually share my screen again, just to give a little bit more context. But the, the rights, they would be rights out of the driveway. And I believe there was a point made to where would they essentially turn around? Yeah, basically the, anyone who's wanting to turn around to then make it back to US Route One. I know that Cherry Hill, I believe, Cherry, both Cherry Hill Road and Cedar Street are zoned residential, but they have, they also have zoning for local business as well. That does make sense though for the turnaround. So those are the, the direct access back to Route One. And they have the signalized intersection to be able to make that turn. Um, again, we are talking about three to four trips that would be exiting the site during the peak hour. So one trip every fifteen minutes, one trip every twenty minutes. And the onus would be, I know there was a, I know that there have been a couple of questions on, on safety. And the onus would be on the driver exiting the site to ensure that there is the gap to exit the site. That's uh, um, that, that's I guess the key, the key point here. Um, uh, and I know that there was also mention of the hundred and twenty-two daily trips. Again, that was an I T E number based on their previous studies of similar land uses. Um, again, I just would reiterate that the other sites that are in operation also with access to US Route One, I believe that both sites generate those seventeen to eighteen um, trips per day or the, seventeen to eighteen vehicles per day. Um, so the hundred and twenty-two again would be uh, daily trips, not actual cars. So that counts the in and the out. So your actual cars are less than that. But it is a hundred and twenty-two daily trips is what I T E is again, which is the conservative value when compared to this site that is actually operational. Um, I think that, that's all I wanted to add, I think, for now.
Chuck Anderson Chair, thank you, Mr. Kerger. Um, is, a- and Mr. Breton, before I ask if you had had additional comments, it looks like, Evan, it looks like, is that a member, Mr. Kimberly, is a, a member of the public?
Yeah, Mr. Kimberly is the applicant, is the applicant. Uh, I just wanted to point that out, Mr.
Oh, okay. Mr. Kimberly, you, certainly, yeah, certainly applicant and certainly, yeah, has some comments.
My name's Adam Kimberly. Thanks for uh, for a moment here. I'm here with my brother uh, and partner, uh, Jeff Kimberly. And uh, we appreciate the privilege of, of meeting you all and, and uh, trying as best we can to address uh, concerns in the neighborhood, which we understand. We live in neighborhoods and communities and, and it's all important that we all take care of them. But I, I want to uh, express a little bit about the nature of, of what we're building here. Uh, and uh, address a little bit about our interests and then the stability of, of what we intend to do. Uh, you know, if we're permitted here as a member of the community. So uh, thanks for just a moment. Um, I don't know if, if you all are familiar with the Take Five brand. Um, but it is a very stable and successful brand uh, that started and originated out of the southeast portion of the country and migrated across the south, uh, central and southwest portion of the country and then up into the, to uh, the, the, the middle portions of the country and northern portions of the country. Uh, New England is actually the, 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 the last area that um, of the country that the Take Five uh, has uh, begun to, to, to really take an interest, but it's got over nine hundred shops uh, with extraordinarily uh, uh, high success rates uh, and stability in the communities. Um, we, Jeff and I are the first to bring the Take Five brand to New England. Our first shop was, or is in West Haven, uh, and then our second shop in uh, in uh, Stratford, and we've got others uh, in, in plans in Eastern Connecticut and Central Connecticut as well. Um, just a, a note about our family. Um, we've been very sta- stable uh, members of, as, as the Kimberly family in Southern Connecticut, New Haven area in particular, since the late sixteen, sixteen hundreds. Um, and so I think uh, we understand the nature of caring about community and stewarding it well. Uh, I, I, it's a family business. We approach this not as a, you know, entirely large corporate or commercial interest, but as a family business with my Jeff and I, with my brother Jeff and I, uh, running the entire show. And, and maybe a little bit about the nature of what we're doing and how it can be additive to the community. Um, we are uh, building a very, very high service, but limited certain number of services uh, brand in Take Five. Uh, earlier questions are great questions about, you know, what, whether we're going to extend into other areas of auto parts and mechanics and, 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 and other things uh, that could be environmentally or otherwise concerning. Just so you know, uh, and, and this was spoken to, we are a, a very fast in, stay in your car, safe uh, convenient method to have your oil changed. And while, while that's being done, if you'd like new wipers or new filter or top off of liquids, fantastic. But it's not a full mechanic shop. It's a very, very limited services, service. We've got, you know, an average of, you know, seven to nine minutes in and out of, of shops uh, elsewhere. And that's across the whole nation, how, how this brand tends to operate. So it's not looking to become more than it is, uh, I want you to know, but it is very, very stable as the other nine hundred shops would, would attest. Um, and, and the brand just has been very, very good members of the community, as is our, our family for a long period of time. So I wanted to just to open up and introduce ourselves. We're privileged to be here. Uh, it's meaningful to us. We plan to be members of the community for a long, and, and taxpaying members of the community for a long, long time uh, with a stable business. And uh, uh, we, we think it's a, would be a terrific uh, use of a, a commercially zoned property uh, that can add a lot of uh, convenient services to members of the community. So just wanted to introduce ourselves and, and thanks for the time.
Chuck Anderson Chair, thank you, Mr. Kimberly. Um, Mr. Breton, did you have other responsive comments you'd like to make at this time or?
Uh, just, just the one about the sidewalks, Mr., Mr. Chairman, uh, it was requested by the town, obviously, for the extension of the, of the sidewalks along the frontage. Uh, the, the width of the existing sidewalks is around three and a half feet. And then we have our, our sidewalk that's four feet that comes into the parcel. I just didn't want to leave that question unanswered from, from the public. So um, something I don't think will be highly used given the area, but it was requested and we're happy to provide it.
Thank, tha- thank you, Mr. Breton.
Hey Chuck, I got one more question.
Sure, Marcy.
Um, hi again, it's Marcy Paluzzi. Um, you know, I didn't even think to ask if you could elaborate a bit more on the disposal of the oils and other various fluids that are going to be removed from the vehicles and, you know, how that's planned for. If you'd just give me a full scope on that, that would be appreciated.
Uh, Jeff, you may have to help me out in terms of the operations inside the business. But in terms of um, um, Mr. Paluzzi, the um, actual utilities, uh, we do, um, you know, ob- obviously per regulations, we do show a sanitary connection with a, with a thousand gallon oil water separator um, as part of uh, uh, the site utility plan to make sure that no oil uh, doesn't uh, you know, migrate into the town public system. Um, Jeff may be able to add more about um, you know, some of the materials inside the building. But uh, we do have a compliant um, utility that, that deal with oil on the outside.
Can, can you guys hear me? Yes, okay.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, so um, we are, you know, it's a closed system. We don't have a basement. We don't have lifts. It's actually very environmentally friendly. Oil is taken and it's put in a used oil tank, which is picked up, um, you know, weekly. Um, some shops are actually heated with the used oil, but um, you know, we would heat this building with natural gas. Um, so it's a closed system. The only oil water separator is needed is for, you know, occasionally mopping the floor. And then the mop sink has an oil water separator to make sure that flows into the uh, to the uh, to the used oil tank, which is picked up and disposed of environmentally friendly way. And I also just wanted to introduce myself. My brother Adam spoke. I'm Jeff. I live here in Connecticut, married, I have four kids. We're not a large developer. We're not a large corporation. Um, we have deep roots, as Adam mentioned, in the area. Um, you know, my, my, our mother volunteered at the, at the Branford Hospice for twenty years. Our father passed away there. Um, it's a community we like and we have identified as one we'd like to be a part of. Um, we think it's a great location. It's a great site. Um, you know, we have a initiative to hire veterans. That's important to us. Um, you know, we sponsor local Little League teams. You know, we raise money for children's hospitals, you know, Take Five helps us with that. So um, you know, we're not just a large corporation. We're a small family run business, developing local franchises in the state of Connecticut, which is important to us. Um, and it's important to us to be a part of the community. So we hope you guys will accept us into the community and we'll look to hire good folks and create a good business, create a good service and, you know, help pay tax dollars to the town.
Chuck Anderson Chair, thank you.
In, in relation, so the oils, nothing's going in the oil water separator other than just oils that are used to clean the floor that are incidental not from the removals, but do we have any idea on the quantities that's going to be feeding this sewer system? Because I know there's been a lot of various talk around town about certain parts of the system that are starting to have capacity issues. And I, I'm not sure. I think this, I don't know if this feeds into that or if you have to go through W P C A kind of review or not, but I, I don't know if that's going to become an issue. Just because of the volume of water going into the sewer.
Understood. I'll let Mac talk a little bit about it, but from our, you know, from our business and building perspective, you know, it's a drive-through. So it's not, the only, you know, basically plumbing that we will use is the, you know, three employees at a time that are there. So it is very minimal. It's less than a residential house. Um, and of course, anything we do to tie into any sort of public, you know, water management system will have to be approved by the, the various, you know, departments that would approve that. But from a use perspective, you know, will be even less than a residential house.
Yes, um, Ms. Paluzzi, uh, just to build on what Jeff said, uh, we, we responded to staff comments that a facility like this would discharge about a hundred gallons per day into the sanitary system. Obviously that's very, very low. A, a three bedroom house would, would, would do three or four times higher than that. Um, we have started conversations with W P C A. They obviously want uh, us to apply as part of an approval with this board. Um, but we have very, very minimal impact. And as you mentioned, none of the oil from the, the actual service of the vehicle is going into sanitary. It's just incidental. That's why it's, there's like the, the trap there, just to make sure that doesn't mitigate down into your public system.
Chuck Anderson Chair, thank you. Um, okay, uh, I think at this point we need to decide, um, J C, I see you raise your hand again. We have closed the public portion. I'll give you fifteen seconds. Uh, we'll let, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm counting right now. Let, let J C go.
Real quick. Thank you, Jeff and Adam. And you're saying as your personal point, I actually first job was at Connecticut Hospice when I was a child. And listen, Branford wants a Home Goods, Branford wants a Trader Joe's, Branford wants to put an auto mall and put the stuff all in one area. I understand you want to come to the town and do it, and it's great that you're not a corporate and you want to do it family. But listen to the people of Branford. We want you to put this in the right location and do it right.
Okay, thank you, J C. Okay, um, okay, commission members, I think what we need to decide is whether we're going to close the hearing um, or, or keep, or, or keep it open. And uh, I think the issues that, that I see, Harry, what, what do you got?
Um, without a time extension, the hearing we need to close tonight. Um, I did look, um, we've used, uh, or the applicants used and given us some of the sixty-five days that uh, can be used to extend the time period of public hearing uh, to get us here. So already fourteen days of that have been used. So there's fifty-one days left, which could theoretically take us through to uh, October twenty-sixth. Um, and, and maybe uh, whether the commission's going to um, require a peer review is part of the discussion too, possibly. Is it this point? Other than that, I don't know what else, or maybe there's additional information you would want. Apart from that, I don't know.
Right. The, the two issues that I heard were uh, number one, a peer review. Um, additional time to do that. And again, we would need the applicant to have to consent to that. Uh, the second issue is I think that they, the site plan doesn't show significant trees, uh, which was, I believe, a requirement. So the site plan is deficient. So the applicant may want to fix that. So um, that, that would be it. And, and I, I, the, uh, in terms of a reason for the peer review, frankly, I, I mean, my concern would be, I think, you know, our staff, both Harry and our ten engineer raised it, saying we're not experts. I was not particularly confident. I mean, I asked what I thought was a pretty basic question of, you know, is this safe? And I couldn't get an answer. Um, and there was an indication that, and, and the, the crash data, which is information that they would normally look at, hasn't, they haven't looked at that yet. And I understand because they're going to give the D O T, but I think it would be helpful to do. So that, that would be my leaning uh, on that. But let's, I, and, and I know the applicant's app, it's going to be applicant's call. Uh, because they can say, no, we'd like you to close the public hearing and, and we will close the public hearing. Uh, other, other commission members' uh, comments? Do we want to request an extension? Do we want to request an extension? That that's the issue.
Fred Russo, I agree with you, Chuck.
Okay, thanks, Fred. Joe Chadwick, thoughts?
I am also in agreement.
Okay, Joe Vayuso, any any thoughts?
Yeah, my thoughts are we uh we should ask for a an extension.
Okay, and for for a peer review, okay. Uh, Marcy?
Yes, to the peer review, which would then, I guess, require the extension.
Right, Sharon?
Yep, I agree with the extension.
Okay, okay, so I guess it's up to the applicant. Are are you uh? Would would you be willing to grant an extension? I don't know how long the peer review would take. Obviously, we have a limit as to the maximum. Uh, amount of time that we could even request it and uh but but um. I'd say probably thirty days. Uh. Uh, so so we look at the first meeting in October. And it so so what 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 are your thoughts, applicant? Would you be willing to do that? And I, you know, I mentioned the two reasons that I thought one is you may want to. Provide the significant tree infos, which is potential deficiency. And then the second is for us to. Get a peer review, to get a better level of review of this uh from an expert.
So I I guess I'll let the applicant jump in, but um. The the driveway is out of your guys jurisdiction. It's a D O T decision. Regardless of what your peer review finds, whether they're in agreement with us or not. So my personal professional opinion is a peer reviewer will be irrelevant. If we get D O T to sign off, and I cannot get D O T to sign off until I have local approval. So I just want to throw that out there. Also, we have done a traffic memo and a site plan. I do not know what your peer reviewer is going to review. This is a very, very basic site plan and a very, very low volume of traffic. So I understand the concerns. I think that concern lie with the D O T signing off on this driveway, not this commission.
Um, okay, raise a question. Harrison Town Planner, um, you know, the while the commission has an authority to say. Denied the curb cut, for example, that's certainly D O T's purview. Um, a peer reviewer could provide the basis for comments the commission may want to make to D O T regarding its concerns. Um, and they do. Excuse me?
I think you already have those concerns and we are happy to pass that along to the D O T.
Well, I think you, you know, I think what I'm hearing out of the commission is the desire and the town engineer, myself frankly. Is the uh desire to have a professional uh look at all the comments and concerns that have been raised. The geometry of what's going on and the information you provided as the applicant about trip generation and so forth.
That's 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 the D O T. The D O T controls and maintains and operates this road. There there it's a it's a department of engineers.
I don't know. Well, frankly, they are not going to sit there, I don't believe, and listen to the hours of commentary from the. Uh, commission and the public and the questions that have been raised about it uh and so forth. And some of those people may never even. You know, driven the intersection. I know they're professionally doing it and that's their purview. Um, but I'm saying, you know, as a conduit and a way to focus the comments in a way that um makes sense, the D O T process might be a role for the peer reviewer. So.
And. Peer reviewer may may agree with everything you've said. May help your case. I mean, I I don't know.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I, you know.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you know, it but I I I don't know. I I but it's your call. You, we have to grant the extension and uh. Uh, you know, and and we 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 can, otherwise we'll close the hearing. I mean, you you can, we we can close the hearing. We'll we'll decide based on what we have.
Yeah, it's possible the commission might find that it's uh incomplete information. It's been provided, it's possible.
Everyone, as mentioned, you know, uh, my brother and I are relatively new to this um process. And I'm I'm not exactly, um, I don't have experience with a peer review. Um, a- a- and so I I I guess if the question is whether that's something we, you know, want to do, or it I guess it's something that's being requested, I. I I I, at least from my perspective, I need to learn a little bit more what what exactly that entails.
Do you want to take a break and and talk to your consultants and get back? Um, we have to make a decision tonight because we're out of time. We either close the hearing or we don't. And and maybe you want to talk among yourselves, and that's fair. And we can go to another hearing and bounce back and uh. You know, or 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 something, I I.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind a a five minute recess?
Sure, well, well, that.
Ten hour and a half, and I can discuss with Jeff and Adam offline and come back with a decision.
Yeah, why why don't we do that? That that makes perfect sense. So what is it? It's uh, I have eight thirty six. So let's. Take a break and we'll convene back at eight forty five. Okay.
Thank you very much for giving us that time. Appreciate it.
So we'll we'll be in recess then, till eight forty five.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
About eight forty-five, so I think we should, uh, we can come back. Uh, Harry, we got everyone here?
I think everyone is popping back on as we speak.
Okay, great. Okay, has, uh, Mr. Burton, have you been able to consult with your clients and about the extension in the period?
Yes, absolutely. Yep. Thank you for the time. That was valuable. I appreciate it. So, talking with the applicant, uh, this is what we proposed to, for a discussion. Um, obviously, we want to move forward. We're, we're confident that our, our design would be approved by DOT, but we understand this commission's and the neighborhood's concern. So, uh, we're kind of on, on, on a path here. We really don't want to extend, so we're gonna opt, would the commission be amenable to closing the public hearing tonight? If we modify the driveway to a right in, right out? Which takes the left turn off of Main Street out of the equation?
Right out?
And I can show you graphically, I can show you graphically what I mean by this. One second. So, right now, uh, can everybody see my screen? Can you guys see my screen?
Uh, yes.
So, right now, as we have a design, people can take a right into this site? Or they can take a left into this site? And when everybody leaves, they have to go right. We hear, obviously, your concerns are really this left in. Those gaps, traffic backing up this way. So, what we're proposing is, if you guys will forego, um, um, extending this process and introducing a peer reviewer, we would agree to make this a right-in-only, so the, the geometry of the middle island would, would change. So, that left-ins would not be allowed. It would be right-in, right-only. If that's something that would take away the, the, the concerns from the commission here? We'd like to close tonight with that as a condition of approval. Um, if, if that doesn't, um, uh, assert your, you know, calm down your fears, uh, then we would grant the extension for the peer reviewer. But in the essence of time, obviously, this is our third planning and zoning meeting. Uh, we're looking to keep moving forward with the rest of our permitting process and potentially get into the ground. Um, we're trying to find a balance that, that is respectful of your concerns and also respectful of our, our timeline and financial commitment.
Mm-hmm. Uh... Here.
Can I make this comment quickly?
Yeah, and under the umbrella that DOT signs off on it anyway, either scenario.
Understood. Um, just a, a comment. Um, typically, this commission, I don't know if you've worked with them much. Um, I don't recall that. Um, usually, there'll be a prepared staff, um, approval, uh, list of findings and conditions in this case, uh, which I have not prepared, given the inclusive nature of what's going on. Um, so, I don't think a vote will occur till the next meeting anyway. Um, I would suggest keeping the public hearing open at least till the next meeting. And I, as staff, would commit to, um, trying to have findings and conditions available based on the right turn in, right turn out, if that's acceptable to the commission.
Okay, okay.
I'll give you a chance to formalize this into a, you know, actual plan change that could be looked at by the town engineer at least.
Yeah, I, I mean, I still, we still had another, it wasn't simply a left-hand turn. I think it was some of the, uh, public comment, I think Mr. Conti, his hand is raised, and by the way, the public portion's closed, as I recall. He, he said that, you know, people come around on the right-hand side, you know, coming off, off of, from Aldis, they, they get over and they get in the right-turn lane, they never stop at the light, and they keep going, and that entrance is right there. And even though the sight line may be there, it is, it is right around the corner. Um, I, I just, maybe, maybe that's fine. And, and, and what I'm looking for is some level of confidence to, uh, just for someone to look at, you're right, because I think those are the two main ones, the left turn in, and then also the right turn that, that, that is coming out, because that, that was, uh, uh, be- because of that, just because i- it's totally unexpected, then when you fly around that curve, because you don't stop. Uh, and that there could possibly be, uh, you know, someone going in there, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm over-exaggerating it.
Just to remind you guys, there, there is a driveway there right now.
There, there, I, I understand. It's unused.
There's, I'm not making up a new driveway. There's actually another driveway over here that we're closing down, right? There's, this is a property that has access to a road.
Yes, yeah, correct. The, the, there's driveway and there's no use on the property. And, and there's a, there's a piece of pavement that, that goes in there, and now we're putting a commercial premises there. So, that, that, that was, um, that's the issue. But, but let me, let, let's, my, I, I, I would have a, I would still have a better level of confidence to have someone else look at it. Um, and, and, but, but, but I, you know, I understand, want to, want to get moving, understand that, but, but, but I understand, this is a great concession as well. Let, let's go around. Joe Chadwick, what do you think?
Um, I'm, I'm in agreement with you, Chuck. Um, I, I think the, the right turn in, right turn out is a, um, bit of false, um, story, what? It's a superficial solution, because it still dumps traffic into that part of Main Street, uh, to Marcy's point about having to make the turn onto Cherry Hill to turn around. Um, it, it is, it is not a solution. It is an expediency. And, um, I don't know, there, there, there have been certain aspects of pendency about, about the presentation that leave me a little cold. Um, I'm looking for something to warm up to this. The applicants seem like really great guys. It's a really great business. I don't think I am comfortable with the design and the outcome of the design.
Thanks, thanks, right. So, Joe, you would want to get the, an extension and a peer, okay, great. Fred? Fred Russo, are you out there? Did, did we, uh, we lose Fred?
Um, Fred, you'd have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, we, we're still screen sharing, I think, right? Yeah.
I, I don't, shouldn't have any effect on it.
Yeah, I can't see him. Oh, yeah, Fred, you're...
There, there, yeah. Gotcha.
My concern is, um, with this revised proposal, revised revision, is this. If someone is traveling on Main Street, uh, and a, a left-hand turn into the property is no longer allowed, how does that person know that? That, the person who wants to enter that property has to go around some way, go by, uh, Aldis and the bank in order to make a right-hand turn. I can see coming out, making the right-hand turn. But going in, I don't know how you could possibly prevent anybody coming down Main Street, going toward the intersection, from not stopping and turning into that, into that, uh, that driveway. I, I don't, I don't see how that's possible. So, I, I, my, my concern is, and I, I, I agree with, uh, Joe, I, I think, yeah, can sound like wonderful people, but, you know, uh, but I know this is not a popularity contest either, and what we're trying to do is make it safe for everybody, including the people that are going to be using the, the, the services, that it's safe. So, I would feel better knowing that someone else, uh, you know, professionally looked at this, not the state of Connecticut, but on our, our basis, and I agree with Harry, that, you know, I, I, I have doubts about it, but I want, I want my doubts cleared up, one way or the other. If, uh, a peer, uh, uh, group comes in and says, hey, it's not a problem, then I'm okay with it. But I, I, I don't think just one opinion is enough, and then handing it over to the state who knows that we've already approved it for, you know, they might be more lenient about what they're gonna block. So, I think, I, I, I would feel more comfortable having a peer review on this and giving them an extension.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Fred. Uh, Joe Vayuzo?
Yeah, uh, that left-hand turn was always a concern to me, and making that proposal, I think, would be a, a major improvement. Because that, that's, I think that's, that's the real, that's one of the most, more dangerous intersections by taking a left as you're curving to the right, and all of a sudden, somebody's trying to make a left-hand turn, not, not allowing that, and Fred is very, and, but Fred is right too. How do you know that? I mean, and then, and somebody's gonna do it anyway, so it, it's a stickler, but that's amazing, to me, that's a, that was my, uh, major concern, is that left-hand, uh, turn into there. And right, right out, right in, right out, and I'm not even sure that right out is gonna end up being right out. I think some people are gonna just not want to go all the way to Cherry Hill Road or whatever, and, and, and take a left right there, and, and it'll be even more dangerous, but, uh, bottom line is, I think we need a peer review, just to hear it from a, another professional, and, uh, and see what they have to say. So, I, I agree with you guys. I think, unfortunately, I, I hate to keep this thing going, but I, I think we need to have a, a, another opinion. That's, that's my...
Chuck Anderson, thanks, Joe. Marcy?
Hi, um, let's not forget that we still don't have a count on the trees that are gonna be removed and clear-cut, and that it's a significant grading exercise. I'm, you know, I mean, the, the peer review helps me to have a better understanding of the impact on Cherry Hill. Obviously, if we're approving it before it goes to the DOT, that's a significant thing. There's a lot of right-of-way space for the DOT to work with to potentially realign that intersection to make this driveway work, but, you know, my understanding of DOT applications is that they're gonna put that on the developer, and if the developer, I don't know if they tried to negotiate with Aldis, but to me, I could see the developer having to spend just as much money facilitating DOT corrections with road alignments or widening or whatever they deem necessary to make it safe because of our approval, when I really do think that if they took a second look at the Aldis access, you know, and maybe it's not possible because Aldis unwilling to negotiate that, I don't know, but, you know, to me, you know, if, if, if they can negotiate the Aldis access, I'm much more favorable to the project overall with the destruction of the trees. If there, if that's completely off the table, I have, you know, significant concerns with the overall impact to the grading of the property. I know that there's sewer capacity issues in town relating to just a small volume of water, which really hasn't even come up to this board, but I know that's in the background. And, you know, it's, it's the gateway to Main Street, and, you know, this is the, you know, I mean, I appreciate them as, you know, services, but is this the type of, you know, service we want as a Main Street-type visit downtown, which obviously, we need to, you know, receive people who want to come to town with open arms, and I'm all in favor for that, and I think, you know, Kimberly is our lovely family. Um, but, you know, we have a number of other oil-type changing facilities along Route One. There's other lots available along Route One, and, you know, I have to question, you know, separate from the traffic, whether this is the most logical place for this use, even though it is zoned for that, and, you know, shame on us for not addressing the, the zoning on a lot that's so difficult to develop in our regs till now, when we have somebody that actually has a use for it, so, but, um, that, that's kind of my take overall. So, you know, I'm relying on the, the peer review to try to help change my mind, otherwise, to be quite frankly, to, to have, you know, to have something that I feel confident I can approve, because right now, I just am not there.
Thanks, uh, Chuck Anderson. Thanks, Marcy. Uh, just a question before we get to you, Sharon. Harry, just a question. Is this in the town center, village district area?
Uh, it is not. It's just outside.
Okay, just, oh, sure, but it, it is sort of a gateway to going downtown, but it's not technically in the area. Great. Uh, Sharon?
Yeah, um, I, I really agree with a lot of the things that Marcy was saying. Um, I would like some more information as well. I agree with the neighbors that we have this kind of business in so many other areas in town, that I would really like to see a more unique business move into Branford, something that we don't already have.
Thanks, thanks, Sharon. Okay, um, so, you, the applicant, I think you've got a sense that the commission has, there, there's a number of concerns. The individuals may not be shared by everyone, but you heard, just heard individual stuff, so I don't know how we'll do this collectively. My, my sense is that an extension to, and having a peer review would both allow, allow us to get a peer review and see what it says, maybe it supports you, maybe, you know, whatever, it says what it says, maybe there's other safety issues. It would allow you to address what I think are, there's a site plan deficiency. You didn't mark the, the significant trees, which I suppose could be grounds for denial if we close the hearing. Um, and, uh, also give you a chance to look at this tape and to hear the other, think about what commission members have said and maybe address them, so in additional time, they help you in. So, that's my recommendation, thinking that, um, the suggestion would be that I, I, and, and I understand everything that's going on. Uh, but you gotta understand, you, you, you picked a, a site that is very difficult, and, and, you know, no, no problem, if this were somewhere else, it probably, we wouldn't be doing this. But, but, you know, that, that's sort of the nature of the beast here, so, um, uh, what, what, do, do you have, uh, I, I, I guess that's the question. Do you want to grant the extension, the thirty-day extension, and with the expectation we do a peer review and we continue the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman Jeff Hand is up.
Yes, Jeff. Jeff, you have some comments? First.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hello. Um, yes, so, uh, thank you guys for considering it. We were trying to, um, listen to the feedback and thought that the right-hand only in might alleviate, uh, some of the issues, but hearing the feedback, we are okay granting the extension and um, conducting a peer review, and we will look into the trees in greater detail. And, um, I also just wanted to comment, we would have preferred to go have our entrance in through the Aldis and the Chase as well, but it just wasn't possible. You know, we, we would have preferred that from an operational perspective, um, both from the ability to get access through it and the ability to design it. So, we're, we agree with that, but, um, with what we're working with, we will take the time to do a peer review and, um, and, uh, look to design something that the community feels is safe.
Okay, yes, with a peer review, it's, uh, Harry, go ahead.
Uh, just a question, a couple of questions, actually. So, it, the offer of a time extension is thirty days till we're talking about the October third meeting of the commission, through that date?
Yes.
Approximately thirty days. And, uh, the peer review, are you, um, at this point staying with the left turn in? Or are you gonna think about that? Because if you want to, if the hearing is gonna continue open, you can change or not. It's up to you.
Perhaps we should get the guidance of the reviewer on the left as well.
Yeah. I, I would suggest, I mean, you may want to work up something in, uh, you know, proper form and a plan, just to have it in your own back pocket. Um, it sounds like from some of the comments, um, if it's uh, a design that's such that would, um, practically almost eliminate the possibility of taking a left turn into the site, that might be, uh, you know, something the peer reviewer could say conclusively, um, or at least as conclusively as possible eliminates illegal inadvertent left turn in. Um, you know, there is a left turn in, left turn, I mean, right turn in, right turn out, I believe, down on West Main Street at the Liberty Bank. Um, I have seen people take a left turn in there that's crossing two lanes, traffic on Route One. It can be done, I believe. Um, but it looks to be illegal, but it's basically the same kind of limited triangle to direct people to go right turn in, right turn out. Um, so there are potentially other approaches. I'll leave that to your designers. Um, there might be more, uh, might, uh, narrow the possibility of someone doing that pretty significantly. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, so I want to thank you, uh, again, we got many other items on the agenda here. So, I, I appreciate, uh, appreciate the, uh, uh, discussion. So, this matter, we're, we're going to continue this matter, public hearing, uh, we got the extension, uh, so we'll continue to our October third meeting, um, as, as a public hearing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so then, let's move on then to item number three of our agenda, which is Penn Road LLC. And is it three and four? Uh, yeah, three and four together. Uh, Penn Road LLC, twenty-eight Kirkham, zero Elm Street, special exception, two-family dwelling. And, uh, also, uh, a special exception coastal site plan for grading at the same site. I think we opened that matter as a public hearing, uh, at our previous meeting. And there were a few outstanding questions. So, is applicant ready to? Uh, and, and there was a general presentation made, I recall, but there were a few...
I just wanted to remind you. Chuck, it's Marcy?
Yes, Marcy?
I just need to remind you that I have to recuse myself on this.
Okay, Marcy is recused on this application. Thank you.
Uh, hi, my name is, uh, Joe Lepri. Um, I'm the owner and the applicant of the property at, uh, twenty-eight Kirkham. Um, as you spoke, uh, we went over this last month. We did a, um, the review of our plan. Um, we're looking to build two duplexes, um, on the property on twenty-eight, um, Kirkham Street. Um, last month, uh, we, we went over to staff report, uh, last month, and, uh, the engineer, uh, John, had not signed off. There were a few comments. Um, we took care of all his issues on the plans, and, um, we had to go to the WPCA meeting for last month in regards to our sewer discharge on the property. Um, there's some limits right now being put in place by WPCA for sewage, uh, water. So, we went to WPCA, we had the meeting, and we received approvals. Um, we are also granting WPCA an easement, um, to be able to access the property. Um, on this property, there's actually a sewer manhole that's on our, on my property, which I will be allowing them to access at, at any point, and as I said, I talked to Evan this morning. Uh, my attorney is working with, uh, Peter Burdon, WPCA attorney, um, just to get that finalized. Um, review of the plan, like, exactly as last month. Um, we're gonna be moving the curb cut slightly over at twenty-six Kirkham Street. Um, there'll be a shared driveway between twenty-six and twenty, uh, and thirty Kirkham, which will allow us our access to get down to twenty-eight Kirkham Street. Um, we are in the process, we, we have moved the driveway slightly, um, so that we can save this large existing maple tree. Uh, we also have a, a specimen thirty-six-inch birch tree on the property that we're, we're going to be avoiding with this, the, the way we constructed the driveway. Um, one of the engineers' comments were curbing. Uh, we added asphalt curbing in the area where the parking spots are. We're gonna allow the driveway water to shed off and feed the grass, which it is, it is doing now. Um, we have a, on the first plan, I believe, is, we have a existing shed and garage. Um, one of the questions on the staff report was, um, stockpiling of material. The plan is to remove this existing garage, and that'll be where our stockpile of, of topsoil and material will go. Um, there was a question on access off of Kirkham. All our construction, um, will be, will be entering and exiting through Elm Street. I have a, uh, a fourteen-foot right away that comes in off of Elm Street. Um, and all our construction equipment will be using that entrance, which is, it's processed now, so it's basically its own anti-tracking pad. Um, one of the other comments was, uh, from the town engineer, was the hundred-year flood. Um, we, we did the calculations, put them on the plan, you know, the way he wanted it. Uh, we will have a storm tech system, which will pick up our catch basin water. And we will have an overflow, which will, will feed a bioretention basin. Um, we've specifically, um, set the level spreader, which is the exit, just in case of an overflow. Um, we've, we've set that to an elevation where if WPCA does need to access the sewer manhole, um, it'll be level with the existing grade. So, their access, um, will not be encumbered at all as far as getting to that sewer manhole. Um, as, as the staff report states, um, everything we're doing is within our setbacks. We will be slightly adding some fill, um, on the side of the house, which, again, that's, we're doing it for two reasons. One, it's low, and two, it's gonna create a little more of a level area, so there would be more access back to the sewer manhole. Um, these houses, we, we went to Center of Town Review Committee. Uh, we took their comments and we, um, incorporated them into the design. Uh, we took their comments and we um, incorporated them into the design. Um, the designs of the houses are gonna basically match the houses we previously constructed up on Church and Meadow. Um, so it'll be a nice fit to the community. It pretty much will match. Um, it'll match a bunch of houses on on um, Church Street in the surrounding area. Um, with that, um, I'll I'll send it back to the board if if you have any questions.
Chuck, thank you, Mr. Lepri. Evan, do you want to review uh, the amended staff report?
Uh. Oh, yeah, that there is one thing that I missed on it. So on the amended staff report, I'm sorry about that. Um, I spoke with Evan and we we, because we're in a tidal wetlands area in the back here, um, we needed to construct, you know, a written um, evacuation plan, just God forbid, you know, we ever run into that. And on my evacuation plan, I used the uh, train station as a location for the people to park and obviously, that's also in a flood zone. So um, we will be submitting and and I talked to Evan about this. Um, we'll be submitting it just to change. We we we'll use Cole's parking lot as a, you know, evacuation point if needed.
Chuck, thank you, Mr. Lepri. Evan, uh, you want to review the the report?
Uh, sure. So there was a few outstanding items after last month's meeting. Uh, they went to the WPCA for approval. Uh, they did have a condition that that sewer utilities might be expanded. Uh, we added a condition to our approval that that should be uh, put onto a site plan. Um, they meet the coastal site plan criteria as well as the special exception criteria. They appeared before the town center board on July tenth and received a positive recommendation uh, with the the following modifications recommended. The size of the proposed cornice may be adjusted as necessary. Uh, two, the applicant shall lower the front porch pitch to allow space between the bottom window casing and the top of the roof. And three, that the applicant shall increase the size of the window trim to the greatest extent possible. Uh, we worked that into one of our conditions. Uh, but first, we had one finding that we were gonna recommend. Uh, that is that the coastal site plan is consistent with the goals and policies of the Coastal Area Management Act. Um, our first condition is that prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall revise uh, Sheets A one oh one, one oh two, and two hundred uh, to incorporate the recommendations of the town center board. Uh, B, uh, erosion control measure shall be installed. And C, that the applicant shall revise Sheet one of five and Sheet two of five to show that sewer utility easement um, to the satisfaction of the town planner or his designee. Our second condition that I added uh, today, actually, so I just want to bring that up on my screen and show you guys. Um, let's see. Uh, this condition was related to that emergency response plan and it just requires that the applicant amend that response plan uh, to a location that's outside of the flood plain um, to the satisfaction of the town planner within consultation with the town engineer. Um, our third condition is that any landscaping must be maintained as as an ongoing requirement of this approval for uh, any necessary measures to control dust or uh, or I'm sorry, any measures to control any dust generated by Phil brought into the cider movement of earth material on site shall be implemented if deemed necessary by their zoning enforcement officer. And our final condition is any uh, proposed lighting has to be compliant with section six point seven.
Chuck, thank you, Evan. Questions or comments from commission members or staff before we open up to the public? Hearing done, let's open up the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment? Uh, Evan, you see anyone? Uh, looks like uh, Ms. White. It's raises raised her hand and looks like we got a couple. So.
Okay, we good? Can we bring up that graphic that was there with the site plan?
Sure. Can you see it?
Um, it's here now. So you currently own the two historical type houses up on Kirkham. Is the property to the right, correct?
Uh, correct, yes. Twenty six Kirkham and thirty Kirkham, yes.
Okay, and these two structures, they can't fit up on those property? You can't put them in the back here?
Uh, no, it's a separate parcel of land.
Right, I under, but you can't, you weren't considering, why would you not put them on your current property?
Um, because each property is a separate entity. And we would also be over the allotted square footage if we tried to do that. So twenty eight Kirkham is its own separate lot, which accommodates four units based upon the R one regulations.
Okay, on that question, okay, that's sort of, my biggest concern was that it seems like, you know, we don't have any parking for the train station on this side and knowing this property could become available, I don't know if the state would even know if they could have used that for a parking lot. So that was my concern, if you could try to fit them back on your other side and this property might be utilized for the train station more than residential construction. That was one concern. Not exactly a question more there, but the second question on here is there's two trees on one of the houses on the bottom. Is that correct or is that just badly drawn? What are those two trees or palm trees?
So those are two trees that will need to be removed. They are on our original plan. They're on our A two survey. So those two trees will need to be re- um, removed. And as you could see, we we also have an extensive landscaping plan, which incorporates um, all native species. That's why we're we, I I purposely moved the road down um, from one point so that I could avoid taking down any additional trees.
Okay, and my last question would be, because you're over in that flood zone, do these buildings have to be built on stilts? Do you have to be fifteen feet up in the air that you could park underneath them instead of building this parking lot?
No, no, we only need um, we need to ma- we're gonna match elevation thirteen. So uh, all we need to do is put um, the flood gates in and there'll be, I think, four to five steps into the unit. That's it. So it doesn't need to be on stilts.
Just a suggestion from design, it just seems like it would make more sense to not have to build a big parking lot. And at the same time is, you know, with keeping the buildings looking historical would be make more sense or like two other buildings that are on Kirkham Street. And that's my final comment on it.
Okay.
Okay, Chuck, thank you, Ms. White. Other members of the public wish to comment?
Did see one before, but he's no longer has his hand up. Um, Mr. Steinoff, did you want to comment? I don't believe anyone wants to comment.
Okay, um. Uh, Ms. Lepri, Mr. Lepri, do you have any additional comments?
Um, no, I I, as far as the state needing the property or anything, they they had their opportunity. They purchased the land next to my house at twenty six Kirkham seventeen years ago and created the um, turnaround that they had previously have now. So um, the state would never want that piece of property.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Lepri. Any other questions, comments from commission members or staff? Hearing done, then uh, we'll close these matters as a public hearing. And this may be something we may be able to take up uh, after we complete our public hearings. Thank you, Mr. Lepri.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, uh, next item is item number five on our agenda, which is A and R LLC, Amon Ula applicant, Fusco Grandford Industrial, care of Louis R. Pepe owner. Five East Industrial Zone, it's a special exception gasoline filling station and retail store above three thousand square feet. And uh, so this is, I believe, uh, proposed development near the exit ramp on exit fifty six going uh, from Guilford towards New Haven. Um, and so my understanding is that we're gonna open this and continue it to our next meeting. Is that correct? Um, Harry and Evan?
It'll actually be continued to the October seventeenth meeting.
Okay, we'll continue this one to our October seventeenth meeting. What's going on for that is uh?
Is there is there a time extension for that, Evan?
Uh, yes, they did grant a certain extension.
Okay, great. Just for the record, thank you.
Okay, so um, okay, so this one will open and continue to our October seventeenth meeting. So if you're on that one, come on back on October seventeenth. We'll move on then to our next item, which is item number six, which is LRAC LLC, care of Bernie Pellegrino, applicant. AJ GG Realty LLC, care of Paul Mancino, owner for Leasel Lane, a special exception for automobile leasing. Um, that uh, also my understanding is we're gonna open this one and continue this to our next meeting. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. They had to submit an additional special exception for grading within one hundred feet of the inlet.
Okay, so we'll just open it and continue this to our next meeting and then we'll also open that additional application, the public hearing on that, so we can hear them both at the same time. So item number six is open and continue to our September nineteenth meeting. That brings us into item number seven, which is uh, Zero East Main Street LLC, care of Patricia Robinson, applicant owner, eighty East Main Street. Special exception for a two-family dwelling. Is the applicant ready to proceed on that one?
Uh, yes, Harry, could you make uh, Benjamin Connor our co-host, please?
Sure. Um, there he is.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
And you're now a co-host, Mr. Connor.
Thank you. Hi, Ben Connor for the applicant, uh, eighty East Main Street LLC. Uh, and it's a member Patricia J. Robinson. This is an application for a special exception for a two-family dwelling at the property at eighty East Main Street. It is a currently a two-unit property of mixed use. One unit is residential. The other unit is commercial. Uh, it is a tutoring center right now. For years prior, it was a dentist's office. So uh, the highest and best use for this property uh, would be residential. The business that's in there right now has sort of outgrown the space and uh, is just looking to vacate. So the owner now would like to have the two-unit dwelling there, two residential properties. The neighborhood itself is uh, residential in nature. There are multiple two-family properties in the area and multifamily properties in the area. Um, so there's no proposed changes to the exterior other than removing anything that's commercial in nature, commercial signs and things like that, but no, no change to the footprint, no change to the landscaping. There is adequate parking for two residential units that's there. There's access on both Beach Place, if you see the um, map there that Evan pulled up and also on East Main Street. And so, yeah, it would bring it back in line to the residential nature and characteristics of the neighborhood. It's the highest and best use of the property. Previously, the applicant got a variance approved for the bulk lot requirements in order to allow for two dwelling units at the property. We also met with the town center revitalization review board, who fully recommended unanimously an acceptance of this application. So with that, I would open up to see if there's any questions or comments from the committee.
Chuck, thank you, Mr. Connor. Uh, Evan, I think you prepared the staff report on this one. Do you want to review it with us?
Uh, I did, like Mr. Connor said, this is conversion of a res- or a commercial unit into a residential one. Uh, totaling uh, with two units that received a variance from the ZBA uh, to allow five thousand six hundred and thirty-nine square feet uh, per unit, where six thousand square feet is required. Uh, based on the application materials, it appears they uh, satisfy the special exception criteria. Uh, the town center board recommended approval with uh, no modifications. And uh, staff recommends one condition, that any proposed lighting meets the requirements of section six point seven.
Chuck, thank you, Evan. Questions, comments from commission members or staff before we open up to the public? Hearing not done, let's open the public. Any member of the public wish to comment? Oh, Marcy.
Again, I should recuse myself on this one.
Oh, okay. Just for the record, uh, uh, commission member Marcy Pelosi has recused herself on this application. So um, yeah, and members of the public wish to comment? Uh, I see uh, J.C. Wyatt. Uh, Evan, uh, looks like we got a couple of comments. Who's up first? Yeah, yeah.
It's me, right? Okay.
Right.
Okay, so obviously, I was being, hi, J.C. Wyatt again. I'm the next door neighbor. Um, that was the meeting I was hoping to come to tonight, but we had other great comments tonight. So I hope you guys would approve it. Um, I do, you know, grew up here for fifty-three years. This is where I grew up all my life. Um, so it's been my dentist and all of a sudden now a relative of mine has purchased it. And it is great to have it come back from the commercial to bring it back to residential. I think it'll even be better for the neighborhood and for me to have as a neighbor. So I hope you guys would approve it and I'm here to recognize it.
Chuck, thank you, Ms. White. Uh, Evan, who else uh, like, who's up?
Next is Mike and Jen Giordano.
Yes, uh, Mike Giordano, I'm three houses east of this uh, property. Uh, no issues whatsoever. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, it's it's a positive go. Thank you.
Chuck, thank you, Mr. Giordano. Uh, who else, Evan?
Uh, Eric Steinoff.
Hi, um, I'm also a neighbor and also positive. I think it's a clear, clear, good idea. Um, seems like something that should just be allowed by right. Um, uncontroversial, so I I'm in agreement.
Chuck, thank you, Mr. Steinoff. Uh, Evan, anyone else?
No, I believe that's it.
Uh, does the applicant have any further comments? Mr. Connor?
No, none further from me. Thank you.
Any further comments from commission members or staff? Hearing done, then we will close this matters as a public hearing. And again, this may be something we can take up in a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Connor.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay, so that completes the public hearing items. What we'll do now is we'll run through the minutes. We look, so we got two sets of minutes to approve. First would be, and I believe they were sent out in our packet, versus our July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes. Um, was someone want to make a motion uh, with respect to the July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes?
Fred Russo will make that motion.
Fred makes a motion to approve the minutes from July eighteenth, or second?
Chadwick, seconds.
Second by Joe Chadwick. Any further discussion? All in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe Vayuzo?
Joe Vayuzo in favor.
Uh, Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And Chair is also in favor. Okay, and now we have the August seventh special meeting minutes. Is someone make a motion with respect to those minutes?
Joe Vayuzo moves to approve.
Joe moves to approve the August seventh minutes. Is there a second?
Fred Russo will approve, uh, second, sorry.
Second by Fred. Any further discussion? All in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe Vayuzo?
Joe Vayuzo in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And Chair is also in favor. So let's go back to the public hearing items that we may be able to act on. First one was items three and four. This was Pent Road LLC, twenty eight Kirkham. Um, that was a special exception for the uh, for the uh, two-family dwellings. Um, and I think uh, you had uh, Evan, if you can pull up your staff report, you added the, I think a number two to about the uh, that you were, or or which one is this? Yeah, it was the uh, the flood or the uh,
I prepared a separate conditions for the two-family special exception and CAM application and then for the grading application.
Okay, great. So we'll we'll start then with the coastal site plan and special exception application. Um, did you review this with us? Uh, the the conditions, it looks um.
Yes, these are all the same conditions I showed you before. I just split out the ones relevant, specific to grading. Yes, these are all the same conditions I showed you before. I just split out the ones relevant, specific to grading. Uh, for the six point eight application and then the rest of them were for the CAM and the two-family application.
Okay. Does this include the one, remember, I think you added one today, uh, about the evacuation plan? Is that in there?
Yes, um. No, I missed.
You pulled up the wrong one. There you go. There.
Ah, here we are.
I will add this right now. All right, sorry about that.
Okay. So then I think this is the one that you reviewed and read at the public hearing, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, um, yeah, I think uh there was a comment by JC Wyatt. There were just more questions about the uh. Uh, you know, location of it, and I think those were responded to. It looks like the Town Center Review approved it and uh. So any, any thoughts or comments from anyone? Uh, if not, does someone want to make a motion to approve the application, the coastal site plan and special exception by. Adopting the uh staff recommendation findings and conditions presently set forth in front of us and then. Evan reviewed with us at the public hearing.
Fred Russo will make that motion.
Motion to approve and adopt that's uh dropped the staff recommendation by Fred. Is there a second?
Chadwick will make the motion. I'd like to let Joe Vayuzo.
Okay, second, second by Joe, Joe Vayuzo. Any, any further discussion? I think Marcy recused herself from this one. Is that right? I think. Yeah, uh, yeah, okay. So, so Sharon, you'll be voting on this.
Okay.
So uh, all those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe Vayuzo?
Joe Vayuzo in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon Hutton is in favor.
And Chair is also in favor, so that application's approved. And then the other application we, I believe we can act on was the Zero Main Street uh applicant eighty. Eighty East Main Street, the special exception, the removal of the dental office and return to the dwellings. And uh, I think there's nothing, all the uh butters and neighbors that were favorably recommended for this one. And um, Evan, it looks like it's just the one condition, uh, which is the standard uh. Uh, lighting condition, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, does someone want to make a motion to approve the application with the condition as recommended by staff, the lighting condition presently displayed on the screen? And it's in the staff report?
Chadwick will make that motion.
Motion to approve by Joe Chadwick. Is there a second?
Fred Russo will second that motion.
Second by Fred. Any further discussion? And I think Marcy, you recused yourself from this one as well?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so Sharon, you're voting. Uh, all those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe Vayuzo?
Joe in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon's in favor.
And Chair is also in favor, so that application's approved. Okay, so that uh brings us then to old business and um.
Um, Mr. Chairman, just like to notice, we did get a piece of correspondence.
Oh, I forgot. Any correspondence?
Just for the record, uh, we received a letter from attorney Keith Ainsworth. It regards a, a pending application for a special exception at thirty-eight Howard Avenue. So I have sent this uh to the commission in terms of uh, I've emailed it out to all the commission members. Um, so I'm not going to uh try to um summarize it or characterize it. Um. I think uh discussion is best reserved for the public hearing since um it discuss- discusses the application, so.
Sure, yeah, that's something, I think that matter is scheduled for a public hearing in our next meeting, is that correct?
Uh, it's correct.
Okay, so yeah, there's no need for us to review that at this time. Okay. Okay, um, so let's go on to old business. Items one, two, three, and four are the regal application. That's again, the. Uh, the proposal, uh, three buildings, number seventy-two units of residential development. Twenty percent affordable, which I think amounts to thirty-five units. Plus the uh, uh, self-storage facility at the old uh. Uh, adaptive reuse of the old cinema building. And uh, we closed the public hearing in our last meeting and uh. I know Harry's been working on draft and we gave some general consensus. Uh, we had a discussion after we closed the hearing and it was generally favorable. But we wanted to go, wanted Harry to go through the details and look at any nuances and so forth, so. Uh, Harry, you want to review with us your proposed uh resolutions?
Sure, um. Harry Smith Town Planner, I have gone through the details and then gone through the details um a couple more times. Um, so I apologize for all of the um different drafts, but wanted to get something to you. Um, ahead of the meeting and recognizing I'd probably have to work on it some more before the meeting, so. I think we are there now, I hope. Um, I did send three draft documents to you, I believe, last night. Um, or sometime in the afternoon. I revised two of them, so I've also sent the two revised copies, so if you have in your email, you want to follow along. Um, they have revised ones, have a little bit of highlighting and say revised. Uh, one's a revision to the resolution proposed for. The PDD master plan approval, um. So I can start with that. Um, the way we've done these things in the past in form of a resolution is to have several recitals, they call them, um. So we have several of these whereas clauses, which basically recite. Um, the fact it was an application, where it was, what it's about, when we received it, um.
Here, do you want to put it on the screen or do you want?
I'm sorry, I thought I had it up there, so I apologize. Jumping ahead, um. Okay, hopefully everyone can see that now. So again, this is the final revised draft, um. So these are the whereas recitals, um, as I. Described about the public hearing dates, the applications itself. The fact that referrals are made as required to the Town Santorian Police Commission Fire Marshal Town Engineer. Um. Water Pollution Control Authority approval of the application uh was received on eight fourteen. Um, in the wetlands, water courses commission approval. Um, noting the offer of uh the twenty percent of the units to be dedicated as affordable units. Um, and in here, I've elaborated a little bit. Um, cause I think the application states they would meet section five seven G, which is the requirements for the incentive housing zone. Um. Development section, which was um like the application at Summit Place. Um, see if I can get this up here. Okay, can everyone still see the document?
Yes.
Great, okay. Um, so that was intended, as far as my understanding, to make sure the units provided in an incentive housing zone development. Meet the uh requirements of uh Connecticut General Statute eight thirty uh G. Uh, to be counted towards the ten percent threshold. Uh, that determines affordability, the housing, affordable housing appeals procedure in section eight thirty G of statutes. Um, so that'll elaborate on that a little bit when we get further down, um. Just a statement that the application was um. Added to and amended with revised plans, the affordable housing offer, um, and other documents that were uh revised. Architectural plans, revised civil engineering plans and several perspective drawings and other drawings about the recreational amenities, et cetera. Um, noting the residential density that was proposed. Um, this was um. Um, posed at sixteen dwelling units per acre. And acre, here we refer to the entire eleven point oh one acres of. Qualified minimal lot area for the entire PDD, which includes uh the Walgreens site. Uh, the existing uh movie theater. Building and grounds around it as well as the parking area. So it's basically all three lots that were proposed in the subdivision plan that we'll be talking about a little bit later. Um, noted Floria ratio and proposed. As well as the max a lot coverage. So basically I just went through all the details here, um. That there was a storage environs exhibit, uh stamped and sealed by a professional engineer. Um, submitted documenting was a separation distance of an excess of five thousand feet. Between lot of the uh. Uh, the lot that's going to be broken out for the self-storage facility and. Any uh. The closest existing self-storage uses in either direction. Um, traffic study peer review comments. So basically note all the details of the application. I can keep going through this, but we're basically at the end, um. And the commission went through all the uh. Information, keep to consideration and deliberations. And these are uh required findings for um. A master plan approval. Uh, you find it in conformance with the P O C D regarding affordable housing. In order to do that, however, I'm suggesting you may impose a condition. Um, some sort of team up, a future condition about the affordable housing offer, um. To make sure it complies with eight thirty G, so they'll count towards the ten percent. Um. Also saying here that um. Find the PD appropriate to the physical characteristics of the lot. This is language right out of the zoning regulations. Um, as long as um. The appearance of it essentially matches the revised um architectural plans that were submitted in response to. Some comments about the design of the residential buildings. Um. And also that the appearance of the facade, this is uh of the self-storage. Um, a former cinema building was being proposed with self-storage. Um. I made some comments in the staff report about, I think the applicant modified the original proposal. To eliminate these things, well, I would call sort of peek-a-boo windows and self-storage facilities. It's a large glass. Illumina- illuminated area with some faux uh self-storage. Uh, unit doors behind it. Uh, those have been largely eliminated. Um, however, um. I did not bring this up, I did, um. When I get to the condition, I'll explain it a little bit more, but um. It seems to me uh possibly inappropriate to have commercial signage on that side of the building. This is a self-storage building facing the residential unit, so. I've suggested eliminating that. I'll go through that as a condition of the approval. This basically just tees up. Um, the authority of the commission in the zoning for this development to require prohibit. Uh, commercial signage facing the residential buildings. Um, and this just tees up several other requirements that I'll talk about when we get to the site plan, um. That you could further modify the site plan to add pedestrian pathways and crosswalks, um, which I'll explain further. Um, it's basically from the self-storage. Parking along the frontage of what's going to be the self-storage um building. Across into the residential, um, that's going to sort of be the main conduit of. Traffic for people trying to find parking spaces for the residential development, which are mostly to the. Uh, far side of the property away from Route one. Um, some suggesting some changes there. Um, I'll get into when we get to the site plan, um. This is all sort of teeing up several other um. Conditions that are posed for the site plan approval. Which would be additional provisions of trash disposal, recycling if warranted, which. You know, I have that limited language in the site plan approval. Installation for the landscaping, exterior cabinets, um, for building modern HVAC or utility equipment. Um, possible adjustment or changes imposed bus stop. Uh, there is a sort of a. New indication on the revised site plan to show seating at the bus stop. Um, this would. Give the commission authority to say, hey. Let's make sure that the mass, the bus company essentially is okay with that and is there some standard they use? Could it be a shelter? What should it be? The details aren't really apparent from the revised site plan. Um. Potentially revisions to landscaping plans include more native species. Um, also on the facade of the self-storage building facing the residential area. Are some vertical planting elements, so um here would. This would give you the authority to ask for further information on and provisions for maintenance and viability of those plantings. Um. And then the last item here, um. Would provide for, um. Zoning authorization for the CEO, optioning a phased approach. Um, which I understand is how they're proposing the project now. Um, this is just a redundant. I had it down here twice by mistake, so I'm proposing this get eliminated. It's one of the revisions. Um, so moving on here, these would be actual conditions of the. Uh, PDD master plan approval, that the affordable housing offer would be uh modified and clarified. To include any requirements necessary um to comply, make sure that affordable housing units comply and will be credited towards. The ten percent threshold as we explained before. Um, also, I propose adding in here, um. Right now, uh, the administrator, this is sort of piggybacking the center of housing zone. Section of the zoning regulations, which provide for uh. The name and um address, I believe, of the administrator. The person who would uh determine whether someone's qualified for the affordable housing unit. That they're meeting all the uh requirements of that restricted, need-restricted unit. Um, this would add in a little more control here, um. Basically that the name and address of the administrator would be resubmitted annually. And there has been some discussion in town about, um. Possibly um having some other third party be an administrator for affordable units that are being created through. PDD or or some other process uh through the commission. So if the town went ahead and designated an administrator, this would um. Provide for the commission to require that the administrator would become the administrator of the affordable units in this PDD. I, I'm getting into a lot of depth here and I'm going pretty quick, but if anybody has any questions, you want me to? Stop now and just, so we don't go too far. Uh, what we doing, right? Keep going, okay.
Unless, i- if anyone has any questions, interrupt here, but otherwise just keep going.
Uh, this is basically a re- recitation of um. The uses, there were a number of them proposed in the original application materials. Um, this essentially mimics what was done on the. Uh, development by Metrostar on the other side of the interchange with the I ninety-five. Um, although self-storage is here, um. And what I've done, uh, since the um exhibit only demonstrates that it's more than five thousand feet from. The proposed lot two, upon which the self-storage facility would be located. Um, I've narrowed uh the self-storage, allowing the PDD to only happen on that unit. Uh, this could always be changed if, you know, through a PDD amendment, but this would take care of that for now and. Comply with the information that's been provided in this application. So it's really clear, it's only happening here, only where it's more than five thousand feet. Um, these other items were, uh, again, as proposed by the applicant essentially. And as um, as I, again, mirrored the ones on the residential development, the other side of the interchange. Um, so in that, I did break out a few of these to be by special exception. Which is not how the applicants propose them, but it is how the other development across the highway interchange was set up. So uh, limited retail, which doesn't have a size threshold, service establishment. Uh, laundry, table service restaurant, indoor recreation, this is what requires special exception approval, other than just be by site plan. And I did throw in here a minor home-based business, so it's clear that you could do that in one of the apartment units. This would be something that's basically um just about invisible, would just allow someone to register a business and run it on the computer out of their apartment. Um. Again, this is just some housekeeping, um, the PDD. Again, this is just some housekeeping. Um the PDD regulations themselves limit building height, so um it's uh kind of um. Misleading to have some separate. Discussion in the uh. The list of standards for the PDD about building height, because it's chiseled in our forty feet. You can't vary that even with the PDD process. So I'm basically saying where there's. Lotations in that exhibit for those items that they be uh. Removed if they're inconsistent with the the normal forty-foot. Standards said in the PDD. Um I tightened up the lot coverage to point two five, which is I think just over what's proposed. And then um noted that these. Two conditions here would require an amendment to the PDD. This is any change in the use of the residential buildings to non-residential. Or any change in the use of um. Building two, which is the whole cinema building proposed for self-storage. That uh you're gonna change the use there, that would have to be. And part of that, I think a building two is such lim- limited amount of parking there. It's really only conducive to a self-storage business unless the building is essentially raised and. I thought it'd be a. A way for the commission to have the the most control possible over these two changes. The next one um would require all the uh easements, any of the legal instruments that are needed to um. Provide a vehicular access interconnection uh between this property and the Branford service station property. Just to the west. Uh this is required to the access management district. Um with a little bit of a removal of a rock out crop. You know, it could be connected. Yeah, it's close to the intersection, so this is a requirement of the regulation, so I just threw this in here. I did propose a little bit of a modification because um. Um there is a ground lease on the property adjacent to three twenty-three to Walgreen, so. That might limit the ability to have a easement provided until the ground lease um. You know, i- i- expires essentially. So it's basically a quasi property interest sign to stand in uh the Walgreen site. And this also tees up uh for the commission as it was described above. That require all these conditions. So basically, this is all the same wording I went through before. This just. Formalizes it. Um so this is uh. Basically saying you have a condition about, you know, that the appearance of all those buildings would match what was shown on the most recently submitted architectural plans. Everything I talked about with the facade of the self-storage prohibiting signage. Uh making sure that um. The faux windows are illuminated um. And so forth. This one would add this, we talked about the additional possible pedestrian. Walkways and crosswalks. And just because um this. Master plan PDD approval tees up these things. Um essentially, you could approve the PDD and the master plan. Resolution as it's proposed. And if you don't like these things, when you get to the site plan part of this. You could say we don't want that condition. So I can go through that. I don't know if we would need to wordsmith this to eliminate some of these if you don't. Want to include them, though you can. Again, this would require the maintenance of external, the all those exterior recreational amenities on the perspective drawings. And require um. Commissioner's staff approval of any changes to them. Um again, this just tees up the conditions, additional approval, trash disposal, landscaping, all things I talked about earlier. A- as well as the phasing plan at the bottom. Uh this one has to do with um making sure if there are any um. Legal. Easements, other. Legal documents um that are needed to um. Since this property is PD has been broken up into different. Parcels, different lots owned by different people. So wanted to make sure anything that's needed to make sure that the vehicular pedestrian access. Works and is maintained. I'm sure the applicant would have to do this anyway. Make it function as well as different elements under the ground, such as the stone water drainage system. And any rights to drain throughout the PDD and any necessarily utility connections. So that's it for this one. Um we have to pick an effective date. Um like any other zoning regulation amendment. Um this would have to um. Copy of it would need to go. To the town clerk's office. So essentially the master plan. Um that's proposed, so basically a set of drawings and um. All the exhibits submitted in support of the PDD uh mast- in master plan. Um and that would need to be done and. Notice of the decision would need to end up appearing in the paper before. This could be effective. So the default date is sixteen days after. Assuming you decide you want to approve this. So that they. You know, to give a little safety factor, just in case we don't get in the paper. Um right off. I would say September thirtieth. I guess. I guess I'll stop there. Any questions about this one? Um this is the first thing you would need to approve this. And the site plan would follow once this is approved, then the subdivision would be the last. Since the order. I believe they need to go in. Everybody still with me here?
Yep.
Okay. Do you want me to keep going through all three and then you want to do the votes, or do you want to do?
Let's go through all three before we go on any.
Okay. Alright, the next one, again, this was revised. Um just today as well. Um this is for the site plan approval. And special exception um for grading. Basically, I've tried to do those things, the same set of findings and conditions. Again, just the finding that um. The applications to medical is public hearing, considered subject applies. In that conformance with the requirements of the PDD. You would have to prove first and the zoning regulations. Um so everything I teed up in the master plan PDD. Document we just went through. Um here's where proposing actual conditions. On the site plan approval to kind of. Basically follow through with what I talked about before. This is standard boil-plate condition, all constructions stanchly conform, blah, 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 blah. So this one is again more of a standard item that would be solar erosion controls would need to be put in place um. Before any construction activity and to be a pre-construction meeting, including the zoning officer. Licensed arborist, which we've included, though that could, you know, we this is more of a boil-plate thing. I don't know if that was really needed on this site. Um but there are some trees that would be protected, so. Um the applicant's construction supervisor. The applicant's professional engineer. And if we include the Illinois law since there's an approval that applies to this property as well from them. And then a solar erosion control financial guarantee is suggested here. Um regarding uh maintaining. Uh all the solar erosion controls proposed in the plans. Um however, we've had a statement in here that need not cover items already covered in any since the. Similar financial guarantee required by Illinois, so there's not redundancy. Um respect to six point eight, I don't believe they're gonna counter any blasting. I don't think believe there's any discussion of that. My understanding, this is basically a site that was. Previously uh a marsh and it's filled in years ago. I think there was a grocery store at one point. Um before the Rui cinema. But this is just sort of boil-plate we've been including, just in case they run into something at some. Part of the property. Um it does, there is a rock out crop, I believe. On three twenty-three, which is just to the west of the Walgreen, so there could be some rock out crop under that part of the PDD. So there is. Number condition, uh excuse me, conditions and requirements here that would need to be dealt with before. A zoning permit is approved. Um if you approve all this. On the first one requires some specific details regarding all the top lot features. Um all those amenities that were shown on the uh. Perspective drawings and that area between the residential buildings, the. The chairs, the fire pits, all that. That would be identified on detail sheets, so we know exactly what is gonna be installed and um. Put in place. There was a discussion during the public hearing about the sufficiency of the dumpsters. So I'm suggesting here, the condition says additional provisions of trash disposal and recycling or demonstration they are not needed. Uh final locations of all HVAC utility equipment and any further landscaping or exterior cabinets needed to conceal them. Uh usually those things, the location of them and determined um. Post-approval and just prior to construction. D would require addition of a detail for the bus shelter, as I talked about earlier, the bus stop and adjustment of it. Uh or the location of it coordinate with the bus company. Um E would require. Uh detailed specification of a number of electric vehicle charging uh station parking spaces proposed. And what we've required for others has been, you know, the baller type, a little typical detail. And uh I mean, excuse me, the pylons for the EV charging. Uh itself as well as ballots to protect it. It looks like at a couple places um. Or several of them. There is a walkway just off the parking space, so if the. Pylon is going to go in the walkway and the walkway is going to be. X feet wide, then that would be adjusted. I think that's five feet wide. That are to be moved back a little bit from the parking space, so you get the full width of the walkway. Rather than a pylon, you're reducing that. F would um. Require an examination of the landscaping plan, include more native species. If determined feasible, I think there are several of them already proposed. It's pretty. Heavy, I believe, on natives at the moment. Just another look at that. As well as further information provisions for maintenance of those vertical plantings on the self-storage. Uh facade facing. The residential units. I just threw this in here. Um it's been sort of an issue in other developments where this processed stone is a ground cover. Mission can, you know, keep it or take it out, but. It it seems to crop up as a. As a problem in other developments. H would limit signage to uh and this is sort of the preferred um. Approach in the designer view zones um. Light lettering and dark background.
Excuse me, Harry?
Yep.
If we could go back to the process stone.
Yep.
Because processed stone would have. Silk fines in it and it would basically compact. I think the language there wants to be just decorative stone, if that's what you're objecting to.
Great, thank you.
Planting beds.
Okay.
Ever be processed on, but people, some people do like decorative stone, which is a acceptable. To me anyways, an acceptable potential. Material because it keeps the weeds down and you don't have to replace the mulch as much, but.
Yeah, there is an issue when it's next to some kind of traveled way and then we've had issue with stone, you know, ending up in. Drive out aisles, for example, so things like that have been a problem. No, great, thank you. So we have the lighting on the dark background and then uh this is a standard lighting condition. Um I did not receive cut sheets, this will require those, so we can be sure that. It's meeting the um. Correlated color temperature limit of three thousand degrees Kelvin and um. I think basically the lights are. They seem to be acceptable other than that. Um there is one pretty high-intensity fixture that's mounted on, I believe, a twenty-five foot pole. And the foot candles underneath it looked correct. This would require uh. Basic compliance with the last set of architectural plans submitted for. Uh the residential buildings, that was the revised um. Um appearance to be more traditional, if you will, in appearance. So changed here may be required to shall, so it would happen. Um I threw in here um. Just to get it upfront, because I think. Um this PDD might be quickly divided into separate ownerships. And I think it's would serve the interests of everyone if there's a preliminary phasing plan that shows how. Uh this will be built out, for example, if you're doing a drainage. Reconstruction or alteration that. How that. Interaction happens between the different properties of the PDD, because some of them are all. I think was built together, so I believe it all drains in together right now, so it's all commonly owned. And also provide it out in case it's going to be built as a whole, but I don't think that's the case. Um this would just require a preliminary one that could be adjusted later. Um and this one. I've tweaked a little bit, um so this really only applies to. The parts of the self-storage building that are visible from the residential buildings or the parking areas for them. It's basically that huge facade that. Was the former entrance to the cinema. So that on that facade. I'm proposing, there was a proposal, uh uh I guess the design of it included um. Treating the current. Large, I think it's a two-story window. At the former entrance to this former cinema. Uh with film on top of. The existing windows. Um I've seen these things, maybe some of you have as well. They don't age very well, the sunshine kind of beats them up. Um I understand now that they're um. Little more high-tech and they're um can last longer or be acceptable in terms of uh. Of a treatment, so I provided it out here. If it's demonstrated to myself or the commission as a whole, that'll be sufficiently durable and opaque, then. You know, why make them replace the window? So whatever. Suppose they do replace it unless they can make that demonstration. And also eliminate any proposed illuminated display areas. Wish fake or real unit doors behind the windows. Um that they would have to be replaced with exterior siding material, it's opaque. They propose some false windows that would not be re. Need to be replaced, they're fine, as long as they don't consist of openings into the building and basically are illuminated. Uh M here, I posed um both of these at the end as a list in case you uh do not. Want to, you know, require them. Um this would go back to a. Uh suggestion I made about a month and a half ago to the applicant. About basically sliding, I don't go back to the uh the plan here. Okay, can everyone see the graphic of the the site plan now? Yes, no?
Yes.
Okay, great. So you have this parking area here, you have um and I can't remember the exact dimension of this, but it looks to be about. Fifteen feet between the end of the parking lot. Though it varies and the start of the building facade here. There's about maybe five feet here left between the. Facade on the self-storage building and the first parking space. So the proposal was to basically slide this parking lot up closer to. Building five here, also within the island here. And allow pedestrian walkway to be constructed along here. And there is a crosswalk here, but we had talked about another crosswalk here, maybe one in the middle there. So that's the idea because. The the concern was that you have most of the parking for the residential units over in this area. So this is gonna be the main thoroughfare, if you will, to the parking area. And um could become, you know, at certain times of the day. A little tricky to traverse if you're taking things out of your car and juggling kids or whatever, trying to even get across the parking lot. So that was my suggestion. Uh they did not um. When they made the last set of revisions to it, they did not pick up that change. They picked up all of these and. It made a, I think, a really positive improvement to the plan. Whether that's needed or not, I'll leave to you folks um. You know, there uh has been landscaping proposed here, which serves as a buffer. Uh to the parking lot, um whether you could effectively do that. If it slid closer, I mean, it certainly gives you less land to do that. Uh you got headlights shining in here, so that's, you know, possible. Downside than moving the parking lot over a little bit. So let me go back.
Harry, may I comment?
Absolutely.
Um having been someone who's drawn plans like this. When you make that kind of a two-foot change in the ninth hour, you're. Almost asking to create. A lot of inconsistencies in the across all the plans, because a lot of things have to be updated across planting the different areas. And I don't think the game is is not just in terms of plan revision, but in terms of function of the site. You know, you get out, if you're gonna park nosed into the old cinema building. You're you're not gonna tend to walk. You're not gonna park there to go in, because that's not where the entrance, but you're not gonna tend to walk anywhere behind there, and you're gonna walk across directly across the parking. Even though, you know, I just don't think that the gain is worth giving up the green space along with the side of the building. And and what it would do in terms of time to update all of the plans to move it is. I think excessive, because then you you start to impact other parking spaces that are coming into the space vertically and. You know, it's just, it could potentially open up a whole can of worms for very little.
Understood, fair enough, um so I'll leave that open. And go back here, though, to the main document, which is. Off the screen here, should be this one. So there's M, uh moving on to um condition five. These would be essentially some legal um things in the affordable housing offer. These requirements again before zoning permit or building permits issued. Um this would require um. Easement, this is the connection with the adjoining three twenty-three uh Branford. Um service station, whatever it's actually called, property. Um so I put in a little extra wording here, as may be limited by the terms of any ground lease, the property shown in proposal lot one. Um so I'd have to sort of work out the details of that, whether it's some kind of offer that's contingent upon um the ground lease expiring. Or something like that, just to tee it up for the future. Was my thought. And uh there was an incorrect reference here, because frankly, I plagiarized this from another approval and didn't change the direction. Uh there doesn't need to be any six months, so I eliminated that as well. This would require um. Any changes to uh the easements or other provisions for access to the town's pumping station and sewer system. Lines uh currently going through the property, that would require that to be dealt with. And finally, the twenty percent of. Uh figure for the dedication proposed uh affordable housing units uh which rounding up comes out. When I calculate thirty-five units of the hundred and seventy-two, I believe. This would require all those. Limitations, uh deed restriction elements that would allow the units to comply with eight thirty G and the ten percent threshold is specified here. So we could essentially tell we get credit for those units. Condition six would be uh things would need to be done before the issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance or a CO. This would include completing all site work, including all those recreational passive active amenities shown on the plans. So basically making sure what you saw is what you get. Um and if there's any uh blasting, you go for a post-blast survey and final asbills. And again, um this could happen optionally in a phased approach, which is likely how it's going to happen. Um so before that first CO is issued, there would need to be a final phasing plan. Um approved either by myself or whoever's town planner and the commission. Or are the commission, so they could, so they don't like what's going on at staff level, they could go to you folks. If there was fencing proposed in the rear, if you will, of the self-storage facility to kind of limit access to it. To those folks who have units. That was deleted from last set of plans, uh the town engineer questioned that, just wanted to make sure that. Any fencing that goes back in there, which might possibly restrict access to the sewer. Sanitary sewer pumping station would have appropriate provisions to allow access by. Necessary personnel. Eight would limit eliminate uh commercial signage. On that portion of the uh self-storage building facing the residences. And nine is a kind of a boilerplate, um if there's any blasting, this would prohibit um. Any fixed machinery, rock crushers and so forth without approval. Of the commission. Uh standard condition here about stockpiling soil on site is required by the regs. Again, there's a one-year expiration for the six point eight approval in the regulations, this just recites that. Requiring foundation asbills, particularly given the tightness of the development layout here. The standard condition as well, number thirteen, additional signage or lighting, would need a P and Z or staff approval. Whichever is appropriate. Dust control, standard condition here again. And this is also standard condition about maintaining the landscaping, ensuring its survival, if anything gets damaged or dies and need to be replaced. This would require um all those depicted recreational amenities to be maintained as an ongoing requirement of the approval. And again, there's a little wording issue here, so I should have fixed this, it's survival landscaping, um it's really. You could just eliminate those words to ensure survival landscaping is not needed. And if any of those features become damaged, it could be replaced, uh need to be replaced, the replacement of any of them. Modification to them would require approval of a site plan modification application. Which could be done by staff or commission depending on whether it's minor or not. And then I'm suggesting here um. If you're gonna eliminate those features, then they would need to come back to the mission through a special exception process. Number seventeen would um. Basically layout, if you're making, modifying the plan, you need to follow the appropriate approval process, whether that. Some section five point four is the PDD requirements, site plan here or special exception nine point eight. Again, a standard condition here, failure to comply with the conditions might be grounds for application of approval after public hearing and so forth. Number nineteen is kind of a standard condition, the town engineers uh been. Proposing for approvals um that essentially um. Requires maintaining the store more than management system, um this does help the town also out with its um. Maintaining its permitting um through DEP for store more than management. And that is it. I continue on to the subdivision, which is. Little more straightforward than these two, we've just gone over. You ready for the last one?
Yeah, why don't you do it and then we'll.
Yep, okay. Uh so this I did not revise, so this is as was sent out, I think, yesterday. Again, I did this in form of a resolution, um this is similar to how it was done for Maris Landing, which is the other PDD that was. Broken up into different properties. So basically a couple of recitals, as we described for the master plan approval um. Commissions looked at the regulations, PDD prove it, oh excuse me, approval. Um and all the application materials submitted, particularly the subdivision map. That's important because um there is a. Um modification to the typical, I believe um. Side setback requirement to allow the lot line for the self-storage building to be pretty close to uh the building facade. Which makes sense in this proposed development. Also here, uh is saying basically um that you could require. Easements to deal with. The vehicular access throughout the PDD, including access to parking, the walkways, the co-throughout entire PDD, making sure they're. Accessible for all the lots together, for example, you walk the Walgreens to the residential development and so forth legally. Storm drain system material connections, which you talked about earlier. And um basically noting here, the application was amended by different verbal representations and all revised plans and so forth. That you consider all the public testimony and so forth. Uh finding here that um provided. The conditions are complied with, the proposed subdivision meets all requirements, the subdivision regulations. Uh statement here that in the subdivision regulations, regulations themselves. There is an out essentially from the requirement that open space be provided. If the subdivision is creating uh affordable housing equal to twenty percent of the total units constructed, which is the case here. So there's no open space, doesn't need to be considered that. Requirement of the subdivision regulations doesn't apply to this subdivision. So this is the uh it's essentially saying uh. Approved with conditions, these are the conditions proposed, subdivision map would be modified um to address the following. Which is all existing proposed easements, other rights of ways that meets and bounds level accuracy, this is a requirement of the regulations. Um so those are not, I don't think, completely noted on the subdivision map. And all the other remaining informational requirements, building setback lines, et cetera, the signature block and those kinds of things. And uh these are some requirements, these are right in the regulations, subdivision regulations required prior to the signing of the record plans. Grant of any easements in a form ready for uh execution. Any required easements for drainage, utilities access. Um certificate of title. Um there was no land being invaded in town, but let's say the. The easement for the sewer uh pumping station or the sewer line needs to be adjusted in some way, this will take care of that. As well as uh that all those uh. Whoever is doing that can act on behalf of the grantor of the easements. Again, the way you do a subdivision is any easements is things that are. Done, the subdivision plan is filed first, and then the easements filed second, that's a requirement of the regulation. And that's it, so we're proposing, I'm proposing here for you to consider. Have this be effective on October first, which would give time for the PDD to be effective, assuming you say um. The effective date of the PDD is um September thirtieth. Okay, let's stop talking for a minute.
Okay, thanks, Harry. Okay, Harry, thanks for reviewing that, um I don't know, uh Marcy had a. Couple of suggestions, I I counted three changes on the uh site plan and special exception. Uh the changes were uh suggested, Marcy was decorative versus process stone.
Yep, and that's condition uh four F. Four G, excuse me, four G.
Four G. And then uh. Deleting uh L, which was the addition widening the area to provide sidewalks.
I think that's uh M, four M.
Was that M, okay. Deleting that one on the concern that it 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 may screw up things. And affect the landscaping on the other side and that the usage. Uh may not be needed since it's abutting the building and people aren't gonna be walking there. And I think uh.
And there was some wording, I think, in sixteen, uh the first sentence, at the end of the sentence, the words to ensure survival of the landscaping, right?
Yeah, you deleted that. Um are what are people? Have comments on that, I'm I'm okay with any of those, uh how about everyone else? Anyone have any objection or? When we gather, uh Joe Chadwick?
Uh no objections whatsoever, um. Lot of work on this, this is the review I saw the other day.
Yeah, absolutely, Fred?
Uh I agree with you, I think Harry put a lot of work into this, I thought into this, and I'm okay the way, the way it reads with all the revisions.
Okay, Joe Vayuso?
Yeah, I'm same way, I'm okay with Harry, what he was, all the work he did to this.
Okay, and and with Marcy and the suggest, the three changes that we talked about as well, I'm assuming everyone's signing on to those two. Right, Marcy?
Yeah, I mean, it's a tremendous amount of work, I mean, I know I'm being a little picky on, but I know Harry pays attention to those details, so. Just wanted to get it in there straight.
Right, great, no, I appreciate that, this was a kind of work and it's a major project and uh appreciate it. Okay, so um. Then maybe what we need, maybe we can vote. I think the order that we have to start with is the plan development resolution first. Is that correct, uh Harry, that we recommend?
Yes, um again, with the effective date, I'm suggesting of September thirtieth.
Okay, so does someone make a motion to approve the resolution? For the plan development district approval. Mass in master plan approval, application number twenty-four point six point four that Harry just read to us. And again, with the effective date of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Chadwick will make that motion.
Motion to approve and adopt that resolution by Joe Chadwick, sir second?
Marcy, oh second?
Second, Marcy, any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Unfortunately, Joe Vayuso is is not gonna be voting approval on this this uh application. I I have, I I have very, I have a lot of concerns with the density of this property. I I feel that the six point two five acres that uh. This project is being, should have been used for uh. I guess for the calculations of the density and it it comes out to more than twenty-seven. Units per acre and uh I I it's not that I I disapprove them, what they're doing there, but I I feel that. This place, this could be a much better. Much better uh project, if if there was less density, one less building. Giving you freeing up a lot more parking, more impervious services. More outside, they can do more outside uh activities out there, developing more landscaping, I mean, just overall. The 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 PDDs are getting, I think, in my opinion, getting a little bit out of hand with density. There's a couple of the projects that happen in town that uh that's happening the same way, we're not mentioning what they are, who, but. It's not gonna stop the project from going forward, but I I would hope that maybe sometime in the future, we would. Put a little, put these PDDs on an agenda to maybe improve some of the regulations or improve uh. The revisions or whatever, but. For now, I I I I just can't in good conscience. Vote for the uh approval based on the calculations on thirteen acres, when it should have been based on, the density should have been based on. Uh six and a quarter acres, the site that's actually being developed. As far as I'm concerned. This 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 is already a developed site and basically seven acres has already been developed and used up and. It should have been taken out of the calculations, but uh. And that's gonna be my opinion.
Okay, thanks, Joe, so Joe votes no, and Marcy?
Uh Marcy approves.
And Chair also approves, so that's a a motion to approve of four to one vote. Uh let's uh go on to the special exception and the site uh what are the? We proved the mass, the PD and master plan, next one is the site plan and special exception. That resolution, that's the one that had uh the three changes, I believe, that we've talked about. The decorative process, the deletion of the. Uh the five to ten foot walkway is M. And then striking the language to ensure survival of of the landscaping. And we don't need to.
Process, it's decorative stone, there's processes are completely different. Process, it's decorative stone, there's processes, it's a completely different material.
Right, yeah, so deleting the word processed and serving the word decorative, right?
Yep, that's uh condition four G, changing process to decorative. And I've got um eliminating condition four M, which was moving the uh. Parking lot closer to building five and adding a walkway along the self-storage building and then um. Uh, eliminating the words in condition sixteen to ensure survival of the landscaping.
Do, do we need an effective date on this one?
I think if you made it also um October first, that would work.
Okay, so um. Okay, so we'll add that too.
Just to a motion, so a motion to approve, subject to proposed findings and conditions as modified. Tonight with an effective date of October first.
Okay, so that's the motion, I wanna make that a motion to approve the resolution with the changes with an effective date of Oc- Oc. October first, again, this is a cycling special exception resolution that was that Harry just reviewed with us.
Yeah, technically, it's not a resolution, I just did findings and conditions, but just.
Okay, the findings and conditions. So someone wanna make that motion?
Fred Russo makes that motion.
Motion approved by Fred is our second.
Chadwick seconds.
Second by Joe Chadwick. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe?
No, disapprove.
Opposed, Marcy?
Marcy approves.
And Chair also uh uh approves her in favor. And the last one is the um PDD. I I mean, excuse me, the subdivision, what am I talking about, the subdivision? Right, uh, were there any, there were no changes to that resolution, right? You had the effective date already of October first, right? Okay, so I wanna make a motion to approve the subdivision application by adopting the resolution. That Harry just reviewed with us.
Fred Russo will make that motion.
Uh, motion made by Fred, is there a second?
Marcy a second?
Second by Marcy, any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred?
Fred Russo in favor.
Joe?
Joe is not in favor.
Okay, Joe's opposed, Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And Chair's also in favor, okay, so that application is approved. Okay, so thank you, everyone. Uh, Joe, I will say, I mean, fair point. For me. Uh, affordable housing is a big thing, and if it didn't have an affordable, a twenty percent affordable component, I would definitely. Move it down, but uh.
I I think Joe makes a very good point about examining the number of apartment complexes that we're seeing. Just as a trend and uh. Having some just overall discussion about what's appropriate, what, what's good planning as far as sewer capacities, you know. You know, I had a whole conversation with someone today who felt like, you know, our financials are more than strong enough, we don't need to support. Increasing the tax base, you know, I don't, you know, it'd be nice to look at that sort of aspect of. Planning for the town relative to this topic. You know, so we're not looking at things in a, in so much of a vacuum. But a little bit more, you know, macro level.
Now, things are changing in town and we we gotta, we gotta change and revise things, that's, that's, that's the way it goes, you just gotta revise as you go along. What was uh ten or fifteen years ago may not necessarily be good for us today, so we just have to revise it that, talk about it and see where we can improve, that's all.
From a capacity standpoint, I just feel like it's the, you know, we're just getting a lot of proposals. For a lot of apartment housing and, you know, I don't, I don't know what's appropriate, and you know mine, you know, as much as I'd like, you know. I I have, as much as we need, it's unaffordable because. Wages aren't keeping up and, you know, I was just looking at my own daughter's income and what she's trying to do to get an apartment. You know, a lot of these luxury apartments are outpacing. But you know, aren't an accurate reflection of microwave housing that we do have, or. Or just, it's a, it's a different model and whether that's what the town wants to promote or not, I mean, I just think we need to have a. Just in general discussion, townwide discussion about, you know, what the town was to see as far as development. You know, and what our appropriate densities where and uses where, like in our, our other long applications tonight, you know.
What, one of my, my concerns is is the sewer system, and I really, you know, would be nice to have someone talk to us as far as. The sewer system in this town, as far as the capacity we have, capacity that we have or don't have, and you know, it's uh. There's a lot, there's a lot of uh units being proposed, future units, and what can or can, how much more capacity do do we have? And how much more is it gonna cost this town to, to get to that, those capacities that are gonna be needed, I mean. We always thought, talked about school systems, but. The sewer system is 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 another one, that's a very big budget uh situation. That we may be, the town may be responsible for, and we're talking a, a lot of new units. Commercial Parkway, North Main Street, we'd mentioned a couple already that we had informal discussions. Who, who knows what else, I mean, we're talking some. Major uh, major capacities that we have to probably accommodate, so. It'd be nice to hear from the sewer authority, what, what, how far, how more do we have before we're gonna be overtaxed, we're not gonna be able to handle it.
I had the good fortune to sit through one of their WPCA meetings recently and. You know, they are doing some studies to address that and to look at deficiencies, but the the one thing that was troubling to me from a planning perspective is. The attitude that, you know, it's the first come, first serve as far as getting to take the capacity up. And, you know, I I think that really has to be compared against, you know, equally, like one development should take up. A huge portion of the remaining capacity that's left just because they came in with an application before somebody else, and that's. Kind of what they have to go on, and I I don't know if there's anything we can do from a planning perspective to. You know, distribute it a little bit more fairly across the town and other potential. Spaces that might be developed and might be shut out of sewers because somebody else got there before, you know. I mean, it's, I mean, it's something. You know, I think we need to be involved with as they go through their process, because I think there's ramifications that can inform. Decisions that we make with regard to density. And, you know, another PDD process, which is, you know, a great vehicle for, for just getting. You know.
It's not only that, it's road systems, the road systems too, I mean, a little one here, a little one there, a little one here, a little one there, but you add them all up together, it gets to be a big one. You know, so over time, so. It there, you have to look at the whole package, in my opinion, in the. And see, you know, and come up with a, maybe a more long-term plan, I I don't know. It it takes a lot of people to, it's gonna take a lot of people to talk about it, to to come up with as many ideas as you can to. To solve the the possible problems that might be coming up with with added, when you get added, added people, added population in this town. Any town.
I I think those are all excellent points, particularly Marcy's comment about sewer system and there ought to be some. Maybe the commission can uh, you know, it it serves as a catalyst for some of the discussions that. Uh, I think probably need to happen, looking at what could be coming towards us as a community. So that sounds great. I don't know, Chuck, if you wanna think about a, some kind of workshop or something at some point, I don't know.
Well, uh, we, yeah, the the sewer issue, I think, is determinative of a lot of development, I mean, it's, it's, it is, I mean, that what's. That's what distinguishes Branford from Guilford and Madison, you don't have major stuff here, it's simply the sewer capacity and does a lot of stuff. And my understanding is that some of the stuff that even we've talked about, the North Main Street, the Amazon site. That be, there's red flags from sewer, so they may not ever happen, so, so that, that, that is, that is real. My main concern right now is that it's ten forty, and I wanna get through the agenda, but, but uh. Right, so uh, but but all, all good points. Um, okay, so uh, just continuing with old business, I number five. Is something we have for public hearing on the nineteenth, so we don't need to do anything with that. That's Charles Watts, thirty-eight Howard Avenue. And then under new business, we either, uh, we have one, two, three, four, five items. These are items that we either have public hearing set for, it looks like we have three scheduled for our next. For our next meeting and then two that haven't been set, so I assume we'll just set those. Uh, in accordance with whatever the normal process is, right, Harry, anything I'm missing, um, I'm trying to.
Not at all, no, no.
Okay, then, then we can jump now to other business. Uh, first one we have is a bond establishment for sixty-six, seventy-six to eighty-two to Tocat Road and zero Tweed Road, what's that about?
Uh, this is, we received a request for establishment of a uh soil and erosion. Or soil erosion and sediment control financial guarantee related to the subdivision that was approved on August seventh onto Tocat Road. Um, staff reviewed the submitted estimate and recommends. Uh, the commissioner approved the bond in the amount of sixty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty, eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay, um, someone make a motion to approve the bond of sixty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars is recommended by staff. For this uh subdivision.
Sixty-one thousand for sorrow, summation, that that seems excessive, no?
That's the same thing.
For six thousand one hundred?
No, no, it's, it's for all of the uh, the. Storm drainage detention, temporary detention basins, the instruction tracking pad. So basically ensures these things would be built, once they are built, the applicant can come back in and say, hey, they're here. Uh, can I request, can I get a reduction in the bond to whatever level would be appropriate to replace the, the cell fencing and so forth?
But they're not footing, they're just buying an insurance policy, is that correct, right, for the bond?
Yeah, and this, this figure comes from them, right, Evan?
Yeah, and the largest chunk of that is for three detention bonds.
Oh, three of them, yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, I just, the number caught me off guard, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, we did, thought it was high too.
Okay, but using their own number, um. Someone like uh to approve the establishment of the bond? Someone make that motion?
Chadwick makes that motion.
Motion by Joe, is there a second?
Joe seconds.
Second by Joe Vayuso, any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
In favor.
Joe Vayuso?
All in favor.
Marcy?
Favor.
And Chair's also in favor. We got another bond for sixty Maple Street Mariners Way, what's that for?
Um, this is requirement of the uh PDD approval um for the completion of the riverfront walkway. The vast majority of it will be done before they, um, they're looking to get COs for the first building they've completed. Um, so this would um be a bond to cover the completion of the remaining portion of the walkway, essentially. Along the stretch that's adjacent to the last building, they're just pouring the foundation for that now. Um, so the figure opposed, and I've memorized them from Jane Ellis, uh, the zoning enforcement officer. Recommending the approval of the amount proposed by the applicant, which is nineteen thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars for the completion of the riverfront walkway.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to uh establish a bond in the amount of nineteen five forty-eight for the completion of this public improvement. Namely, the riverfront walkway for the sixty Maple Street Mariners Way approval.
Fred Russo will make that uh, motion.
Motion by Fred is their second?
Joe seconds.
Second by Joe Vayuso, any further discussion? All in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso in favor.
Marcy?
In favor.
And Chair is also in favor. Okay, uh, I remember three is the planner's report, anything going on here?
Uh, given the fact that it's quarter of eleven, I think anything we have, we can defer to the next meeting. Unless you have anything, Evan?
Nope.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you, everyone, another late one, uh. But uh. Hopefully, you're not all like this, uh, good points raised by everyone. So I wanna make a motion to adjourn then.
Fred Russo makes that motion.
Motion by Fred to adjourn, is there a second?
Marcy a second?
Second, Marcy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe, Chadwick?
Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Chair's also in favor, so thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody, good night.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.